Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Thank you, Mayor. I would first like to ask for a moment of silence for the people in the Hawaii community that suffered the terrible fire, so if you join me in a moment And now I would like to read an excerpt from a poem by Amanda Gorman, "The Hill We Climb." So while once we asked, how could we possibly prevail over catastrophe, now we assert, how could catastrophe possibly prevail over us? We will not march back to what was, but move to what shall be: A country that is bruised but whole, benevolent but bold, fierce and free. We will not be turned around or interrupted by intimidation, because we know our inaction and inertia will be the inheritance of the next generation become the future. Our blunders become their burdens, but one thing is certain: If we merge mercy with might and might with right, then love becomes our legacy and change our children's birthright. So let us leave behind a country better than the one we were left. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Councilmember Butler Barlow, for those inspiring words this evening. At this time, the Freedom of Information Act certification is required. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of August the 16th, 2023 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Approval of the minutes from the February 15, 2023 work session and regular meeting is the next item for consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Rector?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Rector. Councilman Williams?
Second, Ed Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have a special presentation this evening concerning a fall events update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Tourism Manager Theresa Earles will present the city's 2023 Fall Event Calendar. Theresa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Mr. Manager, I know it says fall, but it feels like it's 100 degrees outside, so you'll have to forgive me if I threw some summer in there, too. We're going to squeeze as much summer out of this season as we can, and part of that is our ongoing farmers' markets throughout the city. The one at Bennett's Creek, or I'm sorry, Bennett's pasture up by the shops, the embroidery shop on Bennett's pasture road, will continue Thursdays from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Of course, our regular farmers' market at the pavilion at the visitor's center continues Saturdays, 9:00 to 1:00. And we also have a variety of pop-up markets, including the one on East Suffolk, at East Suffolk Rec Center on Fridays from 2:30 to 5:30, and then the Bridgeport Farmers Market, which is the second and fourth Sunday of the month. And this Friday, we're going to have the last TGIF Summer Concert Series concert at Bennett's Creek, knock on wood, no rain. Wonderland will perform, and also this weekend, we will have the 35th Annual Nansman Indian Powwow at Mount Knocktown. That is free and open to the public, open Saturday, 10:00 to 6:00, and Sunday, 10:00 to 5:00. And then on the 25th of August, we're going to have the Second Annual Suffolk Peanut Fest Golf Tournament at Sleepy Hole Golf Course. And this particular tournament actually raises money for the Tunnel to Towers 9/11 charity organization from New York that Peanut Fest worked with last year and will be working with again this year. On August 26, Parks and Rec will present Super Mario Brothers at the Holland Ball Field. That's free and open to the public at 8:00 p.m. And then the Teen Summit will happen on, also on August 26, but from 9:00 to 12:00 at JFK Middle School, and then they'll have an after-party from 12:30 to 2:30. And this might be my favorite event that I've ever heard of, Drool in the Pool. The Cypress Pool is going to open up to everyone's dogs. It's very exciting, but you have to register in advance, and of course, we're not going to charge your doggies. It'd be nice if they could swim, but it's from 2:00 to 6:00 on September 3. If you want to bring your best pal, you need to let them know ahead of time. Now, we're going to kind of squeeze into the fall with our plein air festival. Plain air is painting outside, essentially, and we have the fortunate opportunity to have 40-plus professional plein air artists come from all over the country to paint Suffolk, whether it's the downtown area, our various waterfronts and farmland. We will have 12 different painting locations. It's free to come watch and observe, whether you're an artist and you just want to get great ideas, or be inspired, or you're just an art enthusiast. It's really a lovely event. On September 8, from 6:30 to 9:30, they will have a wet paint sale in Soiree at the Suffolk Art Gallery. This requires tickets. They're $100 per person, and they are going fast. This gives you the opportunity to purchase art that has been created throughout the week leading up to the event. And then on the 9th, which is Taste of Suffolk, they have something called Paint the Taste, which is a quick draw event. You register for $10 per person, and you come out during Taste of Suffolk, and you paint what you see. And then you can sell your art. You could give it away if you wanted, but I imagine you wouldn't, but from 12 to 2, you can watch people paint, or you can be one of the artists. And then all the art will be on exhibit at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts from the 8th through the 28th of September, and there will be a closing reception on the 28th at the Suffolk Center, and it's free and open to the public. Now, I jumped into Taste of Suffolk a little bit, and I, we're really excited, and that's part of the reason why I'm up here. The next several slides are going to be all Taste of Suffolk. If you're unfamiliar, Taste of Suffolk is really downtown Suffolk's premier event. We've been doing this for, gosh, almost two decades. We're getting there. We're growing every year. It's Saturday, September 9. We're always the second Saturday in September. It's 11 to 5 in historic downtown, so that's North Main Street and Washington Streets. It's free and open to the public. It's very family-friendly. It's also pet-friendly. We will have signature flavors from 18 of Suffolk's independent eateries. We'll have a beer garden with local craft brews from Nansman Brewing Station, a variety of merchants and exhibitors. The plein air painting will be going on. We have live music throughout the day. We have a children's area and fun zone for games for all ages. We'll have hot wing eating contests, so if you are a little daring, you can participate in that. We also have a new vehicle exhibition, like we do, featuring our local auto dealerships as well. This is a list of our participating restaurants as of now, and there's certainly time to squeeze in a few more if they're interested, but you'll see we have a variety of food. And typically with Taste of Suffolk, you get sample-sized portions or slightly larger, so you get an opportunity to try all kinds of flavors from different eateries throughout the city. And then hopefully, what you'll do is you'll find an eatery or a dish that you love, so that you can go see them at their brick-and-mortar business later in the season. In our kids' area, we're going to have a trackless train, and bounce houses, and kids' crafts, and caricature drawings, balloon animals, face painting, games, and more. We're super excited. We have foosball and Connect Four, and even pickleball, which I'm pretty sure isn't actually for kids, but it'll be fun nonetheless. Our live music, we're going to have three separate places for music. Washington Street Stage, that's at the corner of North Main and Washington Street. From 11:00 to 12:30, we have the Lucky 757 Group. From 1:00 to 2:30, we have raw jazz, and from 3:00 to 5:00, we have the Chong Band. The Courthouse Fountain Park Stage, that's the Oderzo Fountain area beside the courthouse. We'll have acoustic music playing from 12:30 to 4:00 from acoustic A to Z. We'll also have television screens throughout showing college football, and our beer garden will be in the same location. And then at the Market Street Stage, that's where we'll have your contests, your DJ music, and announcements made. And if you want to stay a little later, after we close the street for the festival, we'll stay open at the Courthouse Fountain Park until 7:00 with Snack Bar Jones', and we'll still have our craft brews and wine. We just climbed at the after-party, and you can stay downtown, and if you want to stay a little bit later, you can grab dinner at one of the local restaurants. Continuing after Taste of Suffolk, from September 16 through the 20th of October, the Chesapeake Bay Watercolors Exhibit will be on display at the Suffolk Art Gallery. And then the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts has released their new schedule for 2023 and 2024, and I believe this is the first event they're having. On September 16, vinyl radio will play. They hit the stage at 8:00 p.m. Tickets are required. It's, and we're going to wrap right all back into Suffolk Peanut Fest. We're going to have the Suffolk Peanut Fest Queen's Banquet at the Hilton Garden Inn in Suffolk Riverfront. Now, this is a fundraiser for the Suffolk Pilot Club, so tickets are required. The Suffolk Public Library is going to have an evening of Latin Dance and Murder Mystery. On September 9, or 29th, I'm sorry, at the Planters Club, you can figure out who possibly murdered you or someone else, because you don't know if you're going to be the victim until you get there. And then you, once you figure all that out, you'll have an evening of dance lessons and refreshments and lots of fun. It is free and open to the public, but you have to register in advance. And then on September 30, we will have the Suffolk Peanut Fest Parade through downtown Suffolk. This is just a glimpse at October, because you know I'm going to come back and rattle off of more events in probably a month, but just mark your calendars now, because we have the 45th Annual Suffolk Peanut Fest, October 5 through the 8, and of course, the Suffolk Origin Club Shrimp Feast, which is part of Peanut Fest on October 6. Suffolk Tourism hosts the Friday Night Fright Film Series, which is our scary movie series, on October 13, 20th, and 27. Parks and Rec will have Carpool Cinemas showing Ghostbusters at Bennett's Creek Park on October 14. October 21st and 22nd, we have the Driver Days Fall Festival, and on the 21st, Something in the Stacks of Music Festival. That will be at the North Suffolk Library. The Suffolk Center comes back with Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat by the Hurrah Players on the 22nd. The library also has a Paw Patrol Party, so if you have little kiddos or grandkids, they will love that. That's also with the Suffolk Public Libraries on the 27th. The Suffolk Nansman Historical Society hosts their annual Touch a Truck Trick or Treat Event in downtown. They now have the event closer to the actual headquarters at the Dawson House, so it's behind the Sheriff's Department and the Godwin Courts Building. And then we have Fright Night through Parks and Rec on the 28, that East Suffolk Rec Center, Curtis Miltier Rec Center, and Creekside Rec Center. And I say all that to remind you, please come to Taste of Suffolk on September 9. You can find all the information about Taste of Suffolk at tastofufficva.com. And with all the other events that we have going on in the city, this is really just a glimpse, and you can find information at the sufficpubliclibrary.com, visit sufficva.com, or go to the sufficva.us/parksandrec website. You will find everything to do, keep you busy throughout the rest of the year. And I'm glad to take any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Theresa. We certainly do have plenty to do coming up. Council members, any questions or comments? You know, well, thank you. Job well done.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wished to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If there are any items the members of City Council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none, a motion would be in order. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Johnson?
Consent agenda as presented.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilman Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers this evening?
No, Mayor Doeman.
If not, will you please present the items for consideration?
Consent agenda item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Public Works relocation of Zone C Headquarters Project. Consent agenda item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate fiscal year 2023, 2024, Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation for land acquisition for the future Hobson Park project.
Mr. Manager, will you please provide an overview of the items?
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, item seven, the city has received $500,000 in funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation to assist with the construction of a stormwater drainage facility as part of the Public Works Zone C Headquarters relocation to Northgate Industrial Park. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the capital projects fund budget by $500,000. There is no local match. Regards to item eight, the city has received an award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $923,192. The award consists of $496,831 in Community Development Block Grant Program Funds and $426,831 in Home Investment Partnership Grant Funds. The funds will be used for implementation of the city's adopted 2324 Annual Action Plan for low-to-moderate-income families. Adoption of the ordinance will increase in consolidated grants, fund budget, expenditures, and revenues by the $923,192. The required 25% local match to the Home Investment Partnership Grant will be achieved through in-kind contributions provided by the grant recipients. In regards to item nine, the city has received $44,550 in funding from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation under the Open Space Lands Preservation Trust Fund. The funding will be used to purchase a site in the Hobson community for a neighborhood park. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $44,550, so there is no local match.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve as presented.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Can members of council recast their votes, please? Thank you. If you could just recast your votes, please, that'd be great.
Rectract the vote?
No, just recast.
Okay, everybody re-vote. Okay, council members, prepare to vote again. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote. We're working.
There we go. Motion is approved. The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
There we go. Okay, we'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement of Box Hanger Number Seven at the Suffolk Executive Airport. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Director of Economic Development Nick Langford will provide the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Manager Moore. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Before you today is a lease renewal agreement for Box Hanger Number Seven at the Suffolk Executive Airport. The lease is for Arnie Freefall Solutions LLC. This is Box Hanger Number Seven. It's about 11,500 square feet. It's at the airport. They're currently occupying it. Just kind of a quick run-through of the current lease deal, and then the renewed lease deal. Current lease is for a three-year term. The new deal will be for a 10-year term. Current lease is for $2,000 a month. We would keep that the same, but we would include a 3% annual rent escalation, which I provided a little chart there on the side to show you how that plays out. The current lease does not detail how the LSC can modify the structure and how those modifications would be maintained, or which party pays for it. The new lease does detail that. Essentially, it protects the city from having to pay for maintenance to any improvements requested by the LSC, and to make sure that any improvements go by city ordinance and code. Staff recommendation is to approve the new lease, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing with the first speaker. Please come forward and provide their name and address.
Hello, Mayor. Members of Council, John Babino, 150 Bush Street, Suite 601 Norfolk, Virginia. I represent Arnie Freefall. Laura Manthe is the proprietor of that. Some of you may know Skydive Suffolk also is one of their businesses that's out at the airport. They've enjoyed a wonderful relationship with the city. They're a large Department of Defense contractor out there, have a number of airplanes, consume a lot of fuel, which the city sells to them, and I think they've been a wonderful tenant for the city, and the city has certainly been very gracious to them. We would just ask that you approve this. What this does is it sets more of a long-term plan, so they can continue to develop their business the way the city would want them to, bringing in other folks and expanding their business, buying more airplanes, and being able to do the improvements that they need to do in order to allow their business to continue to grow without creating any liability to the city and making sure that they're the ones responsible for the maintenance. So I think this was an agreement that was thoughtfully arrived at by staff, the Economic Development Office, as well as the City Attorney's Office, and we would appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. Councilman Williams?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to cast your vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from RE, Rural Estate Zoning District, to RM, Residential Medium Density Zoning District, conditional for property located at zoning map 33, parcels 48, 48A, 49, and zoning map 34, parcel 26, account numbers 251421000, 251419600, 251419400, and 250732000. This is RZN 2021-18, conditional, and this item was continued from the April 19, 2023 City Council meeting. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, the Director of Planning and Community Development, Kevin Wong, and the Director of Public Works, Robert Lewis, will present the staff reports.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As the manager alluded to, this will be kind of a two-part presentation. I'll provide findings as it relates to the land use component of this, and our Director of Public Works, Robert Lewis, will provide you with an overview of traffic impacts and mitigation as well. But this is a project that you are familiar with. Back at your April 19 meeting, you all tabled consideration of this item and scheduled a new public hearing for this evening, August 16. But this is four subject parcels that are subject to this request. They are located within the Central Growth Area, Suburban Use District, and they're located just west of downtown Suffolk. In this instance, the applicant is requesting rezoning of the property, the collection of these four parcels, from RE, which is our Rural Estate Zoning District, to the RM, Residential Medium Zoning District, conditional. To the north of the parcel, we have some single-family parcels on Lake Kilby Road. Those are zoned RE as well, and the Pitch Kettle Farm subdivision, which is zoned RL. That's residential low-density. There's also a large undeveloped parcel to the north that is zoned Commerce Park. The, to the south, is a single-family residence beyond which are developed and undeveloped properties zoned Heavy Industrial, M2, in the area. To the east is the Route 58 Bypass, and undeveloped properties zoned C, Conservation. To the west, there are agricultural properties in the Agricultural A District. So, summary of the proposal. Nothing has really changed since your last consideration of this item, or deliberation, rather. They are requesting rezoning from RE, Rural Estate, to RM, Residential Medium Density, and that is conditional. It includes four parcels, a collection of approximately 89 acres total, just shy of that, actually. As proffered by the applicant, the density is proffered. I want to be clear there. One of the proffers, as offered by the applicant, would allow for the construction of up to 204 single-family detached dwellings. That is binding and would be regulated along with acceptance of that proffer. The proposed density at that 204 single-family detached dwellings would be 2.3 units per acre. That's well below the maximum density in the RM of 4.4 units per acre. As proffered by the applicant, there would be, well, as required by our development standards in the Unified Development Ordinance, there would be 1,750 linear feet of frontage improvements along the project's frontage on Lake Kilby and Lake Kahoon, and additional, as proffered by the applicant, 3,750 linear feet of improvements north of the site to Pitch Kettle Road. The applicant's rezoning exhibits here represent a boundary survey of the four parcels. A fifth, 33*47, line adjacent to Pitch Kettle Farms to the north, has been removed from the original rezoning request. The total acreage, as I noted, of the remaining parcels is approximately 88 acres. The subject parcels are located on Lake Kahoon Road and Lake Kilby Roads, approximately .9 miles from Pitch Kettle Road to the north, and .7 miles from Holland Road to the south. The properties are currently undeveloped and consist of farmland, forest, and small areas of wetlands. The southernmost parcel borders the Route 58 bypass and has no direct access to this limited-access highway. Here we have a revised conceptual plan provided by the developer. This revised layout and eventual subdivision shows the elimination of that tax map 33*47 noted earlier. Although strict compliance with the conceptual plan is not mandatory or proffered by the applicant, it does offer a visualization of what a 204-lot subdivision on the properties would look like. The project will have two street connections to the existing road network, one on Lake Kilby and one on Lake Kahoon. The proposed density, as noted, is 2.3 units per acre, which, as I discussed, is well below the 4.4 maximum allowed in the RM district and is proffered by the applicant. The request to RM provides a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and the conceptual plan depicts open space totaling approximately 27.4% of the site. That exceeds the 9% minimum for conventional subdivisions in the RM district. The Department of Public Works Engineering has reviewed the proposal as it relates to stormwater, which is always an important consideration, particularly at the time of site plan or engineering plan review. With the removal of that north parcel, this request eliminates the area of the site that would drain towards Pitch Kettle Road, and as shown in this exhibit, the drainage divide runs just south of the northern boundary of the northernmost parcel, and that is tax map 33*48. Additionally, the project's site will be graded so that roads and finished lots drain to onsite storm management ponds before the treated runoff is released into the natural wetland channel, which is to the south, also shown here visually. So at this time, we're going to move into traffic, and I'll invite Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works, up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Good evening. Again, as we've noted before, this has been reviewed a number of times. I'm just going to talk about a few key TIS requirements and findings that we found tonight, and certainly at the end of the presentation and at the end of the public hearing. I'll be happy to come back and answer specific questions you may have on both the traffic and also on the drainage. Again, this site is proposed to have two access points, either on Lake Kilby, Lake Kahoon Road, and both of those are proposed to have both right and left turn lanes going in and out of them. And in fact, that frontage along that road will be improved to a full 24-foot wide, standard curb and gutter, closed drainage sidewalk road section as required by our code. Additionally, as a part of this -- Additionally, as a part of this being a rezoning, we require them to look further out to see what impacts they do. The scope of this study actually goes out to Pitch Kettle Road and the 58 bypass on ramps, and it comes back in the opposite direction, Lake Kahoon Drive, all the way back to Holland Road, and then Holland Road all the way back to the Suffolk bypass again. That's the scope. All of that was evaluated. Not every intersection is specifically studied because, again, it becomes very obvious to a trained professional that not every intersection will have any negative impacts. But again, they looked at that, and again, they've also decided in proffering to us some additional funds because we know in this future sometime, the issue at 58 bypass and Pitch Kettle Road ramps will need to be addressed. We've got some other development that's coming, and at some point, we'll have to do some additional work. So they're proffering some money to help us do a little additional early study on that to be better prepared. And in addition to the requirements of the full road in front of their project, they're also proposing something about 3,750 feet going to the north down Lake Kahoon Drive, Lake Kilby Drive, I'm sorry. That is not their frontage. It is not something they're absolutely required to do. Again, working within the existing right-of-way, which is a 30-foot prescriptive easement the developer has proposed, that he'll go out there, and as wide as he can work it, he's going to try to get 20 feet of pavement out there, along with maintaining the drainage, that again, will give us a much better road than we have today. I will also note for you, there are no funding programs nor any opportunities to advance that road capacity at this time without private development dollars here. As you can see in this conceptual drawing, they've actually put together a few slides of what this road will look like at various locations. And again, I know it's kind of small, but again, those slides are available. And finally, there's just a few more, again, showing what the road will look like, specifically the road at their access point, and then also just some general slides of what the overall intersection roadway will look like after the work is done. And with that, Mr. Wong will come back, but as I noted, I will be available for you after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
So as noted, this is a conditional rezoning, which means that on top of the zoning district that they're requesting, there are certain proffers made by the applicant that are conditions to this rezoning. One of those is a mitigation-to-school impacts. This does feed into Elephants Fork Elementary School, Kings Fork Middle, and Kings Fork High School. The applicant is proffering advancement of capacity at all school levels. The maximum number of units, as I touched on, if you move forward with approval this evening, would be limited to 204 units total at a density of 2.3 units per acre, as proffered. The minimum square footage of the structures is proffered by the applicant at 1,850 square feet, and some design standards as well to include the crawl space, raised foundation, high-quality vinyl siding and finishes, as well as architectural shingles has been proffered by the applicant. Additionally, as Robert touched on, all the improvements outlined within the approved TIA. So in conclusion, these are some of the policies that we reviewed as a part of our analysis of this application that are pertinent to this particular rezoning request. We always look to the Comprehensive Plan defined guidance as it relates to land use decisions and recommendations and the Unified Development Ordinance, as it relates to the regulations contained therein when considering rezonings. Policy 2.1 is important to keep in mind with keeping our development focused in the growth areas of the city. This is in the Central Growth Area. It is designated for use as Suburban Use District. We want to ensure that development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner. Within the area, there are established residential subdivisions of a lower density as proposed by the applicant in this case. We want to promote compatibility in land use. Primarily in the vicinity, you have lower-density residential, as proposed by the applicant here at 2.3 units per acre. That does align. Additionally, we look at the suburban use district in which 1 to 5 units per acre is recommended for the comp plan. So the zoning district and the density proffered by the applicant fall within that recommended range. Transportation improvements are needed to accommodate growth, but transportation improvement needs exceed funding. Focusing new development within the existing framework for growth will minimize need to enhance the transportation infrastructure outside the growth areas. That is on page 14 of the Comprehensive Plan. Additionally, the focused growth approach maintains the conservation and agricultural status of lands that are contained outside the growth areas. We have a pretty strict policy of not entertaining rezonings that would result in growth outside of our growth areas because we have areas designated for growth within the Comprehensive Plan, as this property is. The suburban use district is the least dense area in the growth areas. The district should be primarily composed of traditional residential subdivisions, and as I noted, that recommended density is 1 to 5 units per acre. The request does fit within that recommended density range. So the proposed zoning designation, RM, is described in its purpose statement, this is in Section 31403 of the Unified Development Ordinance, as being ideally suited for the suburban use district, whereas the current zoning district, RE, that's Rural Estate, is most appropriate for the Rural Conservation Use District, which is located outside of the city's growth areas. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of this application in accordance with the analysis done against the Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. Additionally, the Planning Commission, at their meeting of March 21, 2023, by a vote of five to three, voted to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with the proffers as presented by the applicant. Lastly, as a reminder, you all at your April 19 meeting voted to defer this matter with an additional public hearing until this evening. That concludes my presentation on this item. I will stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing to address any concerns or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Taking into consideration the number of individuals that I see here this evening regarding this ordinance, City Council has the option of extending the standard 30-minute public hearing. Should it be the will of City Council to extend that standard public hearing period to 60 minutes, would result in a 20-minute period for the proponents, 30 minutes for those in opposition, and then an additional 10 minutes for rebuttal. And a motion would be in order to suspend the rules of order and procedure to permit the extension of the public hearing period as previously outlined. Councilman Bennett?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Bennett. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson for approval. Is there any discussion of the motion? Councilman Rector?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any genuine objections to extending the time limit, but I just did want to point out, I went back and looked at the April 19 meeting yesterday, and while we had doubled the public comment time for that one, the time was not used. I think the opponents' time ended at 9:38, and of course, the proponents' time for rebuttal, they just came back and said, "We'll see you in April." But I'm not going to not support it, but I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Councilman Rector. Is there, are there any other comments? Hearing none, we have a motion for approval from Councilman Bennett, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the amended timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 20-minute period for the proponents, a 30-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional 10 minutes for rebuttal.
This is the public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that's to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council and City Staff. Mr. Manager, my name is Grady Palmer. My business address, 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We have many people who have come to support this project tonight, and I'll just say that that's, in my experience, I do land use all over Hampton Roads, and it is unusual to see the amount of people here in support of this project. It is normally me and the developer, and in this case, many people have come out and supported this project, and I want to recognize and thank them for taking time out of their evening to come out and support this project. And I'll tell you why that's important in just a minute. Also, I want to recognize the opponents. We know that this is a contested rezoning, but we're all here tonight because we care about the city of Suffolk, we care about its growth. We obviously disagree about those points, but we're here tonight, for those who are here in support tonight, you see the little green stickers. We're here because it's important for a healthy housing market that allows buyers choices in where they want to live, and for a healthy market for new residential communities to be approved, when, and this is important, when it's consistent with your comprehensive plan. This is located in a growth area. You heard Mr. Wong and all the reasons that it's consistent. It's recommended approval by staff, and it's recommended for approval by your Planning Commission. When you have those three things together, it's important for a healthy housing market for those projects to be approved. Not all those projects are going to check all those boxes. You'll see some that won't have staff approval, that won't have Planning Commission approval, that may have the reverse, but when they're consistent with a comprehensive plan, they're exactly where you planned growth to occur, they're recommended by staff and recommended by the Planning Commission. That's why we're here tonight. We're all here tonight because the housing market needs to be a healthy housing market. It needs to grant people the choices that they need to live where they prefer to live, and that's why we're here. That's why all these people are here tonight. It is that important for all these people showed up tonight to support this. It's hard to imagine that one project is so important, but this is a project that we believe set to tone for the city of Suffolk, where you're relying on your comprehensive plan, relying on your professional staff, relying on your Planning Commission to make a decision for the city of Suffolk. In many places around the country, we see housing markets that are deeply distorted because of artificial controls on the supply of housing, and it disproportionately impacts buyers with more modest means or desires. Now, that doesn't mean you build houses wherever you want, however many houses you can squeeze in. That's not what we're suggesting. We're suggesting that when the Comprehensive Plan supports it, the staff supports it, Planning Commission supports it, that's when growth is appropriate and residential is appropriate. The city obviously has a legitimate interest in planning for development, and we believe that this site has been planned for. And with the proffers that Mr. Wong talked about that address compatibility issues, we believe this is a good project in the right place at the right time. Now, we agree with many of the opponents of this rezoning that rezoning should not be irresponsible, and we believe that you can spot irresponsible rezonings. This project is not an irresponsible rezoning. The site is located in the Central Growth Area, Suburban Use District, as you heard Mr. Wong. The RM zoning that's proposed is ideally suited for this exact location. The density of 2.3 units per acre is appropriate, given the proximity to Route 58 and to downtown Suffolk. Let me just take a minute. We think that's important, too. Downtown Suffolk needs more residents located close to downtown Suffolk. This will provide an opportunity for low-density development for families to live in close proximity to downtown Suffolk. I've heard all the great events you have going, particularly the events in downtown Suffolk. I think that's a great way to support your businesses in downtown Suffolk. Another way to support business in downtown Suffolk is to approve low-density development where it's planned. We also believe that responsible growth is fiscally responsible. Now, the fiscal impact analysis that's in the package predicts a $1.9 million per year in positive net fiscal impacts off of this proposed community. In addition, the city would receive another $7.3 million during construction. So in addition to that, the developers, Mr. Arnett, Mr. Howard, have made major commitments to the city of Suffolk in school cash proffers and road proffers in order to advance capacity. Now, we've heard a lot about the advancement of capacity in the high school, middle school, elementary school facilities, and the Public Facilities Ordinance. This application is authorized by the UDO to advance capacity. And what do we mean by that? To help the city of Suffolk build future capacity to accommodate growth. So all of the elementary schools, all the middle schools, all the high schools are included into the capital improvement plan. That's why you can receive a cash proffer to advance the capacity at all levels of middle school, high school, and elementary school. Now, a couple of interesting statistics that I noted in your April retreat. Overall student capacity or program capacity exceeds enrollment citywide by 1,498 spaces, which, I mean, that's good news for the city of Suffolk, that you've got a lot of room citywide. But more interestingly, and this is important, that the city of Suffolk from 2010 to 2022 saw the construction of 6,200 new residential units. In that same time, the population grew by 14,515 people, but only saw a 97-student increase in enrollment. That's 0.006% increase in your student population citywide, when your general population was increasing by 14,515. Now, Suffolk isn't alone in that. Chesapeake is seeing the same thing, where they're growing at 1.5%, but the student population is essentially staying the same. And I think that's representative, that there's so many other options for parents to educate their children in non-public schools. And what that means to me is that new housing is critical to maintaining school populations and the valuable tax dollars that flow from Richmond to Suffolk based on enrollment. So now, in addition to that, we've also included major proffer commitments to transportation, and you've heard those with the ramp, 58 Pitch Kettle Ramp Junction can study, the right-turn lane on Holland at Lake Kahoon. But here's why I want to spend the balance of my time, is kind of explaining the difference between the proffered widening of Lake Kahoon and the proffered widening of Lake Kilby. What you heard from Mr. Lewis was the widening of Lake Kahoon, and that's in a southerly direction, is city standard. So we have a lot of frontage on the property. We are widening 1,700 feet to full city-standard road width. Now, when we start going north to tie in to the improvements that Pitch Kettle Farms made several years ago, that is where we're constrained by the right-of-way, and our traffic engineer is here, he can talk about it, he'll come up in rebuttal and talk about the sufficiency of 10-foot-wide lanes. But that's where we're doing 10-foot-wide lanes all the way north for 3,700 feet to tie in to the improvements that Pitch Kettle Farms made to our north. And so going south, full city-standard improvements, going to the north, major improvements, major safety improvements going north to 10-foot-wide lanes, and we can talk about the types of vehicles that can pass one another, but any vehicle that will be coming and going on Lake Kilby to the north will be able to pass each other safely. This will result in a much safer condition than it is now, much safer for current traffic and traffic that would come out of this neighborhood. So in conclusion, I want to say Suffolk has done a great job attracting business to the city. Quality housing at all price points is needed to support that business. We believe that this price point will be attractive to employers and employees in Suffolk, and we ask that you approve this rezoning. I want to thank the staff for their hard work and working with us and the Planning Commission for their recommendation for approval, and I ask you for your approval as well. Thank you.
We have our next speaker, please. Next speaker to speak in favor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Members of Council and City Staff. My name is Jeremy Caleb Johnson, and I am the Chairman of the Hampton Roads Realtors Association headquartered at 638 Independence Parkway in Chesapeake. The Hampton Roads Realtors Association is an organization which represents nearly 5,000 professional realtors and the 1,100 Suffolk properties those realtors have sold this year alone. The Hampton Roads Realtors Association first and foremost advocates for the private property rights. We are gatekeepers to the American dream and access to homeownership for all, and we are also advocates for principled smart growth driven by data empowered by community involvement. The data we have with regard to the Lake Kilby shores development points to a project which has been discussed broadly amongst neighbors, vetted thoroughly by the city's planning department staff, adjudicated formally by Suffolk's citizen-led Planning Commission, and cross-examined carefully at every turn by members of the public, including some fine folks who are not fine folks who are not only opposed to this effort, but also really to any rezoning effort. Their efforts should be applauded, for they have shown a light on what is happening in Suffolk and indeed in many similar cities around the nation. We are now looking more closely at the bucolic bliss of working farms, the pastoral peace of private land, and the timelessness of restrictive zoning. They've brought emotional nimbyism into a logical concern of a private property owner's fair use for their land vis-à-vis local government controls and approvals. One concern I know we all share is the potential diminishment of Suffolk's agrarian culture. According to the most recent USDA Census of Agriculture, Suffolk has over 79,000 acres in farming, which is up 14% from the previous census. And that is remarkable. The potential unfettered growth is another concern we commonly share. According to demographic research from the University of Virginia, Suffolk has grown at a modest 2.3% rate. If we look at the available housing stock available to purchase, Suffolk currently sits at a dire 2.6 months of supply. That means if we stopped building homes today and no other homes came on the market for sale, it would take less than three months for the buyers in the marketplace to buy every last remaining home. By contrast, a healthy real estate market is approximately six months of supply. Without any new construction, Suffolk will begin to backslide. According to the Brookings Institution, "A well-functioning housing market is critical to a city's economic success and necessary for employers to attract and retain workers." Another concern is the downzoning from a somewhat grand building parcel of three-acre lots to roughly a quarter acre. A quarter acre, give or take, is stereotypical lot size for many communities, and smaller lot sizes provide greater access to housing attainability. People want to live in Suffolk. People want to work in Suffolk. And people want their kids to grow up in Suffolk. But they're having trouble finding homes. Suffolk needs new residential development, done smartly, in order to keep up with Suffolk's projected growth. We at the Hampton Roads Realtors Association firmly believe that Suffolk can have it all, a robust agricultural community as well as quality housing development to support the job growth, as so many businesses are choosing to locate in Suffolk. We want to work with neighbors and businesses to retain the best parts of yesterday while planning for the best parts of tomorrow. The current Suffolk comprehensive plan established current use districts, and this project falls in line with the citizens' wishes as laid out in the comprehensive plan. To sum it up, this is residential growth where you'd expect it, how you'd expect it, and when you'd expect it. Thank you.
We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. We have six minutes and 38 seconds.
Good evening, Mayor Duman, Vice Mayor Ward, members of council, staff. I am Laquita Frazier, address 327 York Street. I'm going to start off with a quote. "There are people in every time and every land who want to stop history in its tracks. They fear the future, mistrust the present, and invoke the security of a comfortable past, which in fact never existed." Robert Kennedy. "On behalf of Smart Growth Suffolk Incorporated, I ask the city council to approve this rezoning request submitted based on the application, not the misinformation being spread by one group of individuals. This rezoning meets the requirements that you as a body approved in our current comprehensive plan, offering diverse housing for all income levels is vital to our economic growth. It is unrealistic in this current housing market to build and sell homes on one acre. This rezoning is within the growth area and will positively impact the short and long-term transportation and school capacities needs despite what the opposition is stating. The traffic impact will only occur after the roads are improved, as listed in the application. And even then, it will not result in the pandemonium being described by the opposition, because, see, I drive Lake Kilby, Pitchkettle, and Kings Fork roads regularly. As a graduate of Suffolk Public Schools with two adult graduates, a rising sophomore at Kings Fork High School, I find it disingenuous that individuals that don't regularly support the school system use it to attack this project. Where is this same energy when the school system needs support during the school year and budget season? Instead of posting negative pictures of our buildings, why aren't we encouraging our school board and our city council to work more strategically together to better plan for the growth and population for the long term? At the same time, our populations surpass portions, and we are suffering from a housing crisis like most of the nation. Suffolk has become a central hub for goods entering the East Coast via the ports. We feel it every time the train tracks stop. The traffic will continue to increase because we are not offering the housing options suitable for the workforce, because the employees are leaving our city after work. The tax revenues gained from this development will increase opportunities to improve the infrastructure, schools, and job creation. Now, everyone wants the amenities such as entertainment and shopping. However, this cannot be accomplished without increasing the rooftops or taxes. In closing, I ask the city council to approve this rezoning based on the application's merits and not to succumb to the misinformation and exclusionary practices of limiting growth to only certain areas of the city for the comfort of few. No one is attempting to turn Suffolk into a metropolitan by taking the farms. No, what we want for Suffolk is for Suffolk to be the best Suffolk that it can be by growing in a way that benefits everyone." So I leave you with this quote. "I think it is inherent in humans to be driven by cause. However, we must be able to differentiate between sensationalism and true facts. Otherwise, we risk to sacrifice many things in life for the wrong cause, which may even include our own happiness." Thank you.
We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. And we have three minutes remaining. We have three minutes remaining for proponents.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Jenkins. I recently moved to Chesapeake, but my church is still here in Suffolk at 2501 Mullen Road. I just came to speak on basically what I have been speaking on each time I come up. As a longtime resident of and self-employed contractor working in the city of Suffolk, we need a steady housing market to keep us working. There's lots of manufacturing and distribution jobs coming to Suffolk, and those people want to live here. I want us all to be able to live here. When I need help at work, I use Suffolk residents, too. We all need to keep working, support this rezoning, so we can keep working. Please. Thank you.
Next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. We have two minutes and five seconds.
Mayor, Council, I'm Ben Fitzgerald at 5132 Nansman Parkway. And I am in support of this project. I don't want to rehash everything we went through before. But Suffolk is growing, as has been pointed out by several of the speakers before. And we've had a lot of growth in northern Suffolk. But now that growth, people don't all want to live in the northern end. People want various options throughout the city. This project on Lake Cahoon, from everything I've been presented, is beautiful. I've driven through there several times, not as often as Ms. Frazier. But I'll tell you, I think it's an improvement to the city. The constituency that I represent, they're yearning for this. I even invited a councilman to meet with us and, you know, just right on the spot, had people raise their hands, say, "Who was interested? Who would like to do this? Who's not priced out?" I know there are some who say, "Well, these homes may cost so much." But things are different today. A lot of us that you don't think actually have education and income and want to live in places like this. We resent the fact that we're relegated to certain areas. And, you know, I understand that xenophobia may be a concern for some. But I'd like to say that the city has been great. I've been here for maybe 15 or 16 years. My children have been raised here. And I believe, I have faith in all of you, that you'll make the right decision, that you'll prove that we're about progress, that you'll prove that we're about inclusion, and that you'll prove that you won't be bullied by those who want the wrong thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes the time for our opponents. We will now move to a 30-minute, perhaps proponents will now move to a 30-minute period for opponents. We have our first speaker to speak in opposition to this ordinance.
My name is Julie Matheny. I live at 540 Lake Kilby Road. I've been a Suffolk resident for about six years, and my husband has been in Lake Kilby, Lake Cahoon area for about 11 years. In the public comments section of your staff report, you will find a petition against this rezoning. Tonight, I am presenting you with an updated copy of that petition that now includes more than 600 signatures and comments representing citizens from every borough of the city. The community opposes this rezoning because the proposed density will be too much for the already stressed and unsafe roads in this portion of town. Barely widening the substandard road while adding over 2,000 daily vehicle trips would be knowingly putting people at risk. We are also very concerned about how crowded our local schools are getting, and this rezoning would add over 80 more students. Our designated elementary school was already at 120% capacity last year. Adding more students to overcrowded classrooms and deteriorating mobile units does nothing but make a bad situation worse. On behalf of all of our friends and neighbors, please put safety first and do not approve this rezoning. Thank you very much.
We have our next speaker to speak in opposition.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Viann Gutson. I live at 1121 Lake Mead Drive. I have lived there for 15 years. The growth around the area why I moved here has changed. The reason a lot of my neighbors have for-sale signs is because of the growth, for what we came here for. I have two neighbors that have houses up for sale within walking distance of my house. For me to get downtown, I will now have to go through 204 houses to come to downtown, which adds more traffic, more other infrastructure that is still not available, and the funds still are not there. So I oppose this rezoning. So please, on the behalf of all of the neighbors who still want to come to downtown, please oppose this. Thank you.
We have our next speaker, please, to speak in opposition.
My name is Christopher Dove. I live at 852 Colonel Mead Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. I have a nasal cold, so I'm not going to take my mask off, so I don't infect anyone. I hope no one accuses me of not supporting the public schools. This council well knows my support for them. The UDO requires public facilities needed to support new development meet or exceed the level of service standards, that no rezonings are approved, which would cause a reduction in the level of service for any public facility below the adopted level of service. And this is key, that the adequate public facilities needed to support new development are available concurrent to the impacts of the development. Mr. Wine has failed to follow the due process established in the UDO. He falsely asserts that the development impacts to the public schools have been appropriately mitigated. The UDO requires public facilities will be adequate and available concurrent to the impacts. Of the proposed development, it requires that the impact area shall be based on attendance zones established by the Suffolk Public Schools. Specifically, Kings Fork High School attendance zone, Kings Fork Middle School attendance area, and Elephants Fork Elementary School attendance area, and not the others that Mr. Wine mentioned. Kings Fork High School and Kings Fork Middle School do not have any planned capital improvements, period. So there can be no rezonings. It is prohibited by the UDO. Elephants Fork Elementary School planned capital improvements are planned for six to 10 years in the future. And the development order does not include the required responsible conditions to ensure that all public facilities will be adequate and available concurrent with the impacts. The city attorney and the city manager are knowingly permitting this unlawful disregard for provisions of the UDO. And frankly, it's concerning that so many people out here are promoting the criminal violation of the UDO. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, good evening. My name is Brian Harris. I live at 2455 Lake Cahoon Road, right in the heart of Suffolk. My property, my family farm, are about 2,000 feet to the left of that slide as you're looking at it. I don't know why we keep talking about property owner rights as if somehow they're under attack. Nobody is stopping the sale of property. The owners can build on it today by rights. Developing within the current zoning would not significantly impact the roads, schools, or any public utility. Rezoning is not a right, it's a privilege. The density being proposed would add undue stress to our already congested community. The traffic impact study used by staff to inform their recommendation of approval was littered with errors and omissions. It was only after the public brought these errors to light and to the attention of the developer was a modified version of the TIS submitted. Some of those items were addressed; most omissions remain. Here are some examples. There was no study conducted at the two closest intersections directly across the street of the frontage of this property. How can that oversight possibly make any sense? The two closest intersections. Only a partial evaluation was conducted at the intersection of Lake Cahoon and Holland because there was a, quote, "lack of available data." That's what it says. Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the point of a traffic impact study to collect data? Traffic is a top concern for this city. How difficult is it to sit in an intersection and count cars? Our community conducted an assessment of traffic along Lake Cahoon. I know many of you saw that time-lapse video. More than 1,900 vehicles traveled along Lake Cahoon through that intersection, where there was a, quote, "lack of data." 100 of those were semi-trucks. How many people know that there's a semi-truck switching yard just on the left side of that screen right there? I think Shoulders Hill has taught us some lessons, right in front of us, as an opportunity to apply those lessons learned. This is the fourth public hearing on this application, the fourth. So all the information should be out there. But every time we come to this podium, every time I meet with you and we have this conversation, we bring up the traffic impact study. Everybody in here knows there's problems with this report that informed our decisions. Planning? Or you should direct them to rescind that approval, direct the developer to go back, do another study, and inform us with the correct data. Because I don't think anybody knows what that traffic is really looking like out there. Lake Kilby is a rural road. The comp plan clearly notes that it is, quote, "not adequate for servicing existing or forecasted traffic volumes," and it should be widened to 11 to 12-feet lanes. Those are the exact words in the comp plan. If you're interested, it's page 85, paragraph 1, starts on line 3. Somebody should look at that. This plan is not in compliance with the comp plan. The proffer says that they will provide 20 feet of pavement, 20 feet. A 20-foot ride road without curb or gutter fails to meet any legal or safety standard for the current or forecasted traffic volumes. We've talked about school buses a lot, and they already have a tough time traveling down. down and transitioning through Kilby. Adding one to two feet of pavement is not going to be impactful to an already congested substandard utility. Adding two thousand more vehicles introduces an unnecessary level of risk to commuters and the community. Since last October, there have been more than thirty major vehicle incidents in our community. Cars and trucks in the ditch, others flipped over on their sides. This doesn't include the dozens of mirror clips, near misses, and self-recoveries. You all should have received some pictures of what those incidents looked like. When it's your turn to talk, please consider asking someone from staff to come up to this podium and ask them to address the proximal residential and commercial builds that are actively underway in the community. How many builds are happening within four miles? How much traffic will those builds add to the community? Actually, in fact, what you should ask is, how much traffic has this council already committed to developments and what's their total impact going to be to the Suffolk community? Traffic is killing us. If approved tonight, it will be Ms. Dolling and Mr. Hutchins' signatures on the rezoning ordinance right here. It's their signatures on it. They will put their names on the line, certifying that you, city council, find that this rezoning is compliant with the UDO and the comp plan. You are certifying tonight that this rezoning will quote "reduce or prevent congestion in the public streets." You, city council, have taken the appropriate steps to quote "protect against undue density of population in relation to the existing community facilities or those available." Are you certain that those conditions have been met? Are you certain? Be sure of your answer. There are a few more speakers after me, then there's going to be a rebuttal and a chance for you to discuss. The question remains, how sure are you? Thank you for your consideration and, most important, for your attention to detail.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sydney French and I live at 2501 Lake Cahun Road. I'm a state accredited civil engineer who currently works in the transportation industry as a roadway design engineer and project manager. Rezoning to change from low density to high density on Lake Kilby Road is not a safe plan. From my perspective as a civil engineer, the proffered road improvements are not sufficient and create grave safety concerns. I am a neighbor of the subject parcels and drive Lake Kilby Road daily. The current geometric conditions of Lake Kilby Road and the surrounding roads are unsafe for the existing traffic. The existing conditions of Lake Kilby Road include a narrow pavement width, no curb and gutter, no paved or graded shoulders, and open roadside drainage ditches. Also, this road is geometrically a horizontal curve, therefore driver's line of sight is already impaired. Tractor trailers and many other large vehicles such as fire trucks, school buses, and farming equipment frequently travel Lake Kilby Road. Those who travel this road frequently know that it's not uncommon to worry if your vehicle will end up in a roadside ditch or if you will lose a mirror from colliding with incoming traffic. It is also not uncommon to sit in traffic due to vehicles being stuck in the roadside ditches or from the road being blocked by larger vehicles. When traveling Lake Kilby at night, the roadway is poorly lit, forcing the use of high beam headlights for safe travel. Additionally, Lake Kilby Road is also commonly used as a shortcut or alternative route when Route 58 becomes impeded. Lake Kilby Road is currently classified as a minor collector road. The Unified Development Ordinance Street Improvement Standards and the Suffolk Public Facilities Manual state that the minimum width of a minor collector road with an ADT of two thousand and one to seven thousand nine hundred is thirty-six feet, which directly conflicts with the twenty-four foot stated by Mr. Lewis. The VDOT Road Design Manual states that a rural collector road with an ADT over two thousand shall have a minimum lane width of eleven feet with six-foot graded shoulders on both sides. This is also stated in Chapter Four of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Standards such as these are developed for a primary reason of safety. Allowing this development with no significant roadway improvements would become a violation of the city and state's own engineering standards. Standards which were developed in accordance with the Code of Ethics centered around the safety of the general public, who will be responsible for the consequences of not ensuring that these standards are met. If the subject parcels are to be rezoned and developed, the developer has committed to widening Lake Kilby Road to approximately twenty feet. This means that the existing pavement can only be widened to butt up against the existing drainage ditch with no added curb and gutter or shoulders, signifying no significant improvements of the current roadway conditions. The proffers included in this rezoning request do not state that the existing drainage ditches will be relocated or regraded. Those who live in this area and travel this road daily can tell you that drainage is an issue, and the limits of the existing roadside ditches are impossible to determine due to the ditches being poorly maintained. It is also important to note that the subject parcels fall within the line of sight drivers currently use while navigating the horizontal curve at the intersection of Lake Kilby and Lake Cahun roads. As I just pointed out, these so-called improvements do not meet any state or city standards and do not align with the city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan and, in my professional opinion, will cause significant safety concerns. What rezoning will be allowed next? What impacts will additional developments have in our existing inadequate infrastructure? Have these developments been accounted for when analyzing our current infrastructure and the subpar improvements that are being proposed by the developer? Rezoning of these parcels is unethical and violates standards that are made to ensure the safety of the public. Voting yes will result in a heavy impact on the city's existing roadway infrastructure and will create grave safety concerns for the taxpaying citizens who already call this area home. For all these reasons and many more, please vote no. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Stephanie Wildridge. I live at 4580 Desert Road here in Suffolk. First, I want to thank you for your help and support with the Suffolk School Board. This is my sixteenth year as a special education teacher with the City of Suffolk. I helped to open Hillpoint Elementary and taught fourth and fifth grade there for thirteen years. I taught at Kings Fork Middle for the last two years, and this year I'll be working at Elephants Fork Elementary. My passion is for the students of Suffolk. My desire is for them to be educated and to grow, to serve as pillars in our community. If we're unable to meet the needs of our students, our city will not have members to enable it to be strong enough to survive in the future. Over the years, I've seen what overcrowding has done to our schools. Our schools have lost science labs that they had when they first opened. This allowed our students to have hands-on learning to understand and experience science. Some of our schools are now in mourning for science for our state scores since we have taken our science labs out. Also, the overcrowded classrooms do not have enough room for desks for each student. Some students don't even have their own space. As a result, they may sit in groups at tables or sit at counters. Overcrowded classrooms create safety issues, and it makes it harder for them to safely move around the classroom or to exit if we have safety alarms. Also, overcrowding makes it harder for the students to learn because it's hard to ignore others when they're so close together. Behavior issues form when students are too close in proximity with no space to decompress. Several of our schools are struggling with negative behaviors due to overcrowding. Also, any classrooms built for smaller things such as remediation, reading intervention, small group learning, or teaching social and behavior skills are now being used for regular classrooms. This has made it nearly impossible to reach struggling students or to give extended learning for students, such as with our science labs as we had before. Special education teachers are having to get creative to follow federal guidelines for accommodations, such as small group testing. Gifted students who used to have classrooms to report to for their quest now receive services pushed into the general education classroom. This has greatly reduced their opportunities for hands-on STEM activities, experiments, and experiences. This has caused the schools to be judged by parents and citizens. Teachers feel continued pressure, and over the last three years, many teachers have left Suffolk Public Schools to teach in other districts or to teach at private schools who regulate their student populations. The teacher turnover created by overpopulation has also been detrimental to the student population. Last year, there were numerous positions unfilled with classrooms being taught by substitute teachers and long-term subs. This is not a problem for just the school board. As citizens of Suffolk, we need to work together to better our city. This means the Planning Commission, City Council, School Board, and citizens working together for a safe and prosperous city. The Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2282, provides for the issuance of zoning permits for the general purpose of promoting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public and to provide for reasonable and consideration of the following purposes. The second point is to facilitate the provision of adequate police, fire protection, schools, et cetera. Here's our current situation. Due to the already approved expansion and development of the neighborhoods of Center 800, Halsted Reserve, Murphy's Mill Condos, the Preserve at Lake Mead, West Haven Lakes, and White Marsh Point, our school populations can expect to grow wildly beyond capacity. Six of our eleven elementary schools are projected over capacity to begin this school year, and an additional two are at ninety percent or higher capacity. The school most affected by this existing development is Elephants Fork Elementary. At a hundred percent student capacity, the school would have five hundred and twenty children. However, at the end of last year, the student population was six hundred and twenty-eight. That's a hundred and twenty-point-seven percent capacity. Student pipeline proposals from neighborhoods currently being built will increase the student population in Elephants Fork by a hundred and thirty-five students, making it seven hundred and thirty or one hundred and forty-five-point-four percent capacity. If the Lake Kilby Project is approved, an additional thirty-seven students will be added, driving the student population to a whopping eight hundred children. That's a hundred and fifty-four percent capacity. Not only is our elementary school in danger, Kings Fork High School is set to begin this year at ninety-eight percent capacity. The expected growth in student population from the current neighborhoods will put this at over a hundred percent capacity this year. How will we educate our children without schools to house them? Build more schools, you say? According to the city comp plan, Elephants Fork is due to be reviewed for rebuilding in five-plus years, in about 2029, with completion in 2031. The city is sacrificing the high education of this year, or is sacrificing the high education of our students. We have an immediate problem, and new neighborhoods will only make it worse. Our schools are currently overcrowded with students and undermanned with teachers. I discussed that teachers are just kind of stressed out with all this overpopulation and what it brings to the table. Currently, in the last twenty-four hours, I checked our public school portal. We have over a hundred and ninety openings. We have seven openings for administrators. We have forty-three openings for high school teachers, thirty-nine for middle school teachers, fifty-five for elementary school teachers. We're missing thirty-eight paraprofessionals, and we have ten special education positions. That isn't all. I just listed some core positions with direct impact to education. Our children are our future, and the future of our city is being crippled by allowing so many developments to overcrowd our schools. Let me be clear, I'm not saying no development. What I'm saying is that our children, our future, need the city to use common sense and pump the brakes at this time. Allow the infrastructure, the school system, which adequately supplied you with opportunities to learn, this infrastructure to catch up with the growth so that our children enjoy the same and hopefully better opportunities than you or we had to learn. You should need to look into the future to see that something needs to be done and that something is to refuse to allow development until we have adequate schools to educate the students of our city. Thank you.
Have our next speaker, please. Our next speaker to speak in opposition. We have eight minutes and thirty-three seconds.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council members. My name is Victoria Robertson, and I live at 102 Winterview Drive. I have been a resident of Suffolk for thirty-six years. I've also raised two sons that are both graduates of Lakeland High School in the Suffolk Public School system. I am also a licensed attorney. I would like to bring a legal perspective to Mr. Arnett's rezoning application to rezone four parcels bordering Lake Cahun Road and Lake Kilby Road from rural estate to residential medium density. You have just heard from a previous speaker, who is a civil engineer, what the significant negative impacts and safety issues would be on these narrow country roads if these parcels were rezoned. I researched a Unified Development Ordinance since it is the law that governs whether or not a rezoning such as this one before you is legally compliant and follows the purpose of the ordinance, which is, according to Section 31-102 and pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 15.2-2200, to quote "improve the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the citizens of the City of Suffolk." As to the zoning regulations themselves, Section 31-102B of the UDO reads in part, pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2283, "The power of zoning is exercised in order to reduce or prevent congestion in the public streets and to facilitate the provision of adequate police and fire protection, schools, and other requirements." Section 31-601B, subsection nine of the UDO, also states that "the purpose of determining adequate public facilities is not only to implement the policies of the Comprehensive Plan, but also to protect against the undue density of population in relation to the community facilities existing or available." This rezoning from rural estate to residential medium density would run afoul of legally mandated zoning objectives by rendering the schools and the already dangerous roadways leading to the proposed development even more congested and unsafe. Throughout the application and the Planning Commission staff report, the change in zoning consistently requested by Mr. Arnett is from rural estate to RM, residential medium density for single-family detached use. UDO Section 31-403A states that "the purpose of residential medium density is to quote 'provide for detached and attached single-family homes in area where large lot development is discouraged and adequate public facilities and services are available.'" The only logical interpretation of this provision is that adequate public facilities and services must be available now and not concurrently with construction of the development or sometime in the future when there is budgeting in place for it. That being the case, the criteria for RM in the UDO does not allow for Mr. Arnett's proffers to attempt to cure the existing deficiencies in transportation and schools in this area in exchange for the rezoning being granted. There is one proffer in particular that does nothing to alleviate safety concerns and does not meet the minimum requirements of the UDO. That is Mr. Arnett's proffer to widen Lake Kilby to twenty feet. His attorney at the Planning Commission meeting even acknowledged that's not standard. UDO Section 31-612 requires thirty-six feet. UDO Section 601D1 requires that "all applications for rezoning or conditional use approval shall include sufficient information to allow the decision-maker to determine the impact of the proposed development on public facilities." Subsection A goes on to require "the total number, type of dwelling units, and gross density of permitted development." UDO Section 31-602B talks about design standards and how they shall apply within all zoning districts. There are a number of required criteria, such as building, silhouette, spacing, and exterior materials used. At the Planning Commission meeting on March 21st, there was no presentation regarding design elements, and so far, none today. Has council seen any design information to see if it meets the standards that the UDO requires? If not, then there is a lack of compliance with the UDO. The only type of building materials listed in the voluntary proffer are a variety of materials, but nothing specified as to what or how they will actually be used. With all the gaps in information that the UDO requires, how can council make any kind of informed decision today about what appears to be a speculative development proposal? Especially in light especially in light of the negative impacts to traffic, the schools, and already dangerous roadways? I attended the Planning Commission meeting on March 21st of this year, and Mr. Arnett's attorney spoke and stated that Mr. Arnett was there to be transparent. If Mr. Arnett is truly sincere about being transparent, then he should have no problem in stepping up to this podium tonight and telling you how developing these parcels of land, which are so geographically ill-suited for RM development, will promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of Suffolk as the UDO requires. However, if he is unwilling to do so, this rezoning should not be approved, and the land shall remain zoned as rural estate. Thank you very much, your consideration.
For our next speaker, next speaker to speak in opposition, and we have two minutes and 33 seconds. Left of opposition speaker time, two minutes and 33 seconds.
Good evening. My name's Tim Doughty. I'm a long-term Suffolk resident, and my home is on Indian Trail. And I'm going to be extremely brief tonight, unlike prior opportunities I've had to address this council on this issue. You've now had a responsible opportunity to hear a great number of specific city code, state legal, public safety, and public school reasons to clearly demonstrate why this rezoning request presents virtually every conceivable negative and undesirable effect that would properly define the term reckless growth. Also, it occurs to me that I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the painfully obvious, and that is, I want to politely suggest that realtors from Chesapeake and Virginia Beach, lawyer spokespeople from Norfolk, and developers from Portsmouth can't be relied upon to tell Suffolk citizens and Suffolk City Council members what we should do with our city. Thoroughly ill-suited rezoning requests like this one clearly should be denied. You have every reason to responsibly deny it, and the good people here and across the City of Suffolk request that you do so. Thank you.
We got one minute and four seconds left. If somebody would like to take avail of themselves of that time, a little over a minute.
New, just a new speaker. If you already spoke, be someone that never spoke before, willing to come.
Good evening, City Council. My name's John Schmeckenbecker. I live at 630 Manning Road in Suffolk. I also sort of have the misfortune of owning a substantial piece of property right next to where Mr. Arnett just recently bought, but that'll come up in the future. So I did 30 years in the military, and we do something real simple in the military, and we talk about something real important right up front, and then if there's time, we talk about other things. So something that's really important here that I think has not really been talked about. So years ago, some really smart people decided that this piece of property needed to be zoned RE because of the conditions that existed around it, the roadways, the drainage, the schools, et cetera. The simple fact is, is that all those conditions, the reasons why that was zoned RE back then, they still exist, and they're going to continue to exist. So the millions of dollars that are going to be proffered not going to fix the problems. So millions and millions of more dollars are going to need to actually fix the problems, increase the schools, build new schools, all those things that are going to need to happen. Yeah, it's going to come. There's plenty of housing that's being built in Suffolk. Just drive around, any part of Suffolk. There's construction going on, apartments next to Star Motors, apartments all in North Suffolk, all through South Suffolk. There's construction everywhere. The theme that is being put out tonight that we're against building and that there's not enough housing being built, or that certain segments of the community are being, not have the ability to buy a house out here, that's not true. Just drive around, use your own eyes. The stuff's being built. I've lived out here since 2004. I drive all around the city. I see it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will now move to a 10-minute period for rebuttal. We have a 10-minute period for rebuttal. First speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Doeman. You know, as developers and lawyers, we are used to being attacked, accused, often unfairly, but it's understood, that's part of the job. But to see your city staff, your city attorney, be accused of, at minimum negligence in its recommendation of this application to City Council and to Planning Commission is really a, I know the staff can't stand up and say anything, so I'm going to say it. Like, I find that shameful, that your city staff would be treated that way. So I'm sorry, city staff, that you had to endure that. I want to say that we don't come in here and tell the City Council our version of events. It gets filtered through your city staff, and your city staff vets this application. They vet all your applications, and they listen to what we say, and they say, "That's true, that's not true." And that's what the staff recommendation is based on. It's not based on the developer's perspective only. The city staff vets these applications, and the city staff does a great job. I don't always agree. They don't always give me the recommendation that I want in this city and other cities. But when they give the recommendation, it deserves to be valued and appreciated by your city, not only the development community, but your citizens. Otherwise, there's no point in having a city staff. Just have us come up and have the citizens come up and, you know. But you have a good professional staff that does a good job reviewing these applications. And so I just want to say, I apologize to the city staff that you've been accused of that, and, you know, you want, I heard a lot about by right rezoning. We want to do by right. I hear that all the time. But one of the things that comes with conditional zonings in this particular location is pseudo, the comprehensive plan says this is the right location for RM zoning. And what comes from a change of zoning from the existing zoning to the proposed zoning is proffers. Properties developed by right, there are no proffers, no road improvements, no cash contributions for schools, there's nothing, and we get, and this is where you just get houses. You get houses on roads, roads don't change, the schools don't change, nothing changes except you get more houses. And you're seeing that out in the rural parts of Suffolk, where houses are being built on roads, roads aren't being widened. That's not what's being proposed tonight. What's being proposed tonight is a significant improvement to the safety of Lake Kilby, Lake Cahoon. That doesn't come with by right zoning. I heard a lot of opinions tonight from engineers, from lawyers, heard the word "not significant," so-called, subpar, unethical. All those are opinions. No one gave, no one has cited you facts. The staff is into facts. The staff report talks about facts, not opinions. Heard a lot of opinions tonight, and I would suggest that you take those into consideration, but understand they're only opinions about the application. They're not facts. Remember, RE zoning is not appropriate in the suburban growth district. The RM district is appropriate for the suburban growth district. That's what's being proposed tonight, is the RM appropriate zoning district. We want safe roads, we want advancement of capacity, you have to follow the comprehensive plan and rezone to the appropriate zoning district. UDO and the adequate public facilities ordinance, I want to reiterate, allows advancement of capacity when all levels of school are included in the capital improvement plan. All schools are included in the capital improvement plan. Now, maybe not these schools, but there are solutions citywide that address capacity that need funding. This, these developers, Mr. Arnett and Mr. Howard, are willing to commit $2.6 million to advanced capacity. That meets the adequate public facilities ordinance. It is not illegal. That is an accusation that the city attorney wrongly interpreted the UDO. That's not true. So Mr. Howard, Mr. Arnett will, if this is approved, contribute $2.6 million. I know, I know the cost of a school is $30 million, $40 million for an elementary school, but you have to start somewhere. That $2.6 million will more than pay for the design of a new school. So with that, I'm going to ask my traffic engineer to come up to talk about the safety conditions on Lake Kilby, Lake Cahoon, to address some of the comments that were made in the opposition time.
Good evening. I'm Charles Smith, a traffic consultant. Just a few things I do want to, I heard the word "detail," so I want to make sure that you're clear on a few details. So a couple of things. One, the recorded volume for Lake Cahoon is 1,200 vehicles per day, but even if it's closer to 2,000, that's fairly low volume for a two-lane road. And then I've heard people, the comment that, and we're adding 2,000 more trips. So the total trip generation for the site is 2,004 vehicles. But you do have to remember, if we're looking at details, that the site is kind of in the middle of the road, and all the vehicles won't go in the same direction. So all 2,000 trips won't get added combined to the existing 2,000, right? So it's something way less than 4,000 vehicles per day. I've heard that number thrown around a lot, it's 4,000 vehicles per day. So it won't be, and so north of the site, south of the site, they'll both be less than 4,000 vehicles per day. But even at 4,000, that's still, from a level of service perspective, it's still a low-volume two-lane road. We've talked about safety. It's true, there's not enough space for the owner to widen to the 11-foot, 10-foot is, seems to be the maximum that he can get, but it's, it is obviously safer than it currently is. You know, we've heard about buses and heavy trucks, and they're obviously those types of vehicles on that road. But widening the road, even if it's less than 11 feet, is obviously safer than it currently is. So, you know, the, again, I just want to give you actual data, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
For our next speaker, please. We have four minutes and 29 seconds in rebuttal.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify one thing, if that's all right. So the state code of Virginia says that buses maximum width 8 feet 4 inches. That doesn't include mirrors, but, but, so today, buses might travel on that road, we're widening it, so it still seems like, it is not 11-foot lanes, but it's, it seems adequate for two buses still to maneuver, right? So we're improving it, giving, you know, more width, including the possibility of two buses.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Council. My name is Latroy Brinkley, 113 West Washington Street, downtown Suffolk. I am a 46-year resident of Suffolk, Virginia. I had a long, drawn-out speech, but no need to be redundant on what city staff has already approved. They've done a great job, as well as the board. However, there are some facts that were unfactual that were stated from our opponents, one of them being the petition that was applied to the planning study. Those addresses and names were not verified and have no way of being verified, but I took the liberty of myself to go through some of them and follow through. Out of the 50 that I chose, 32 of them were not residents of the City of Suffolk. They don't speak for us. As far as the Lake Kilby and Cahoon project, I stand in support of it. I would actually like to purchase a home out there. You might ask why. As a 46-year resident, I used to go to Lakeland High School. I was a part of the school committee when we went to Southwestern Kennedy, and we were bused through those neighborhoods, and we weren't allowed there. So being that it's being approved now, I would love to move out there. I would love for you to vote yes on this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. For our next speaker, please. Two minutes and 38 seconds.
Certainly, just several things. This is about housing options, and it's historically known, when there are stifled housing options, it disproportionately affects minority communities. So that's, just to let you know, that's what this is about tonight. Believe it or not, this is our city too. Things have changed. This is our city too. I'm going to say it one more time. It might be darker than some people, but this is our city too. Don't look confused. Next, give us a chance. Contrary to beliefs of some, we make good neighbors too. Council, I implore you to choose diversity and inclusion in this matter.
We have our next speaker. We have a minute and 46 seconds. Minute and 46 seconds. Whoever comes forward, be brief.
I would like to speak.
Assistant speaking, you'd be speaking during the rebuttal, so basically in favor of this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Council. My name's Elizabeth Self. I live at 1319 Manning Road. Not a longtime resident in Suffolk, but been through here quite a bit. I've listened to a lot of stuff here tonight, and a lot of stuff I can agree with and a lot of stuff I can't. The school stuff, there are school problems in every city in the country, where there's not enough teachers, not enough room, so that's not specific to this improvement. The roads, my perspective is, we need to fix the drivers before we fix the roads, because even on, even on three-lane roads, you've got crazy drivers shooting in and out that cause a lot of wrecks. And that's not the size of the road, that's the drivers. So I'm just saying that I heard a lot of stuff, a lot of white herrings, or whatever they call them, that really distract from what really is going on. But I have to agree that Suffolk does need additional housing. I watch houses go up for sale, and within a week, five days, they're gone. Practically, things that new owners can try to buy are gone, and they're just not out there, especially in this area. And I think that this is a very well-planned, thought-out thing, and I think that it would be very beneficial to a lot of the people in the community. And I do understand what somebody was saying about houses popping up on roads, and they don't help. They don't help with the proffers, they don't help with the schools, they don't help with the roads. Thank you, Council.
Okay, that concludes our public hearing. Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm going to take a few minutes. I have a few things I would like to go over. First off, I want to say thank you to everybody that came tonight. I have listened to the opponents and the proponents, and I appreciate everyone's comments. A couple of things that have been said, and we talked about the traffic study. Mr. Lewis, if you'll come up, I just have a couple of questions on the TIA. It's been alleged tonight that the TIA study is grossly flawed, and I want to know, from your engineering perspective and traffic division, do you find that the engineering study is flawed?
So, Councilman Fawcett, we certainly follow a certain set of guidelines as to what is required in a study, and those are both city standards, but they also follow the Virginia Department of Transportation. Now, I'll be very, very upfront. When we first got the very first study from Mr. Smith, we worked with him a number of times and said, "We think you've missed this, we need to have a little more information. Please modify that, please address that." The final result is, is it perfect? Absolutely not. I've never seen a TIA that I would tell you is 100% perfect. It's just a reality of life. We do the best we can. A TIA, though, is actually there, it presents information for a trained professional staff, my transportation engineering staff, to do a review and be able to make a recommendation. Certainly, at the end of the day, this development is not going to be perfect as far as all the road improvements that it will provide there, but it is much better than it is today. It's been noted that, one of the things I have heard is we left out some intersections. Well, that's correct. We did look at a couple of the minor intersections and decide there was no need to do the effort to go do a study for something that I can tell you, off the top of my head, after all these years of experience, were non-consequential. They would not have an impact to the overall impact of this neighborhood. What we did do is we went out to the point, so we know- What we did do is we went out to the points that we know could be problematic, and that's what we studied, what we modeled, and what we brought recommendations back to council with this recommendation for approval with the conditions.
So, so let me ask you a couple more questions. So, a part of this process is quite a bit of road correction on Lake Kilby Road, correct? I mean, he's proffering to widen the road, correct some of the road, take the crown out of the road, there's quite, not only in his frontage, but beyond the frontage. So, I mean, that's pretty significant, is it not, to the safety of the roadway?
Yes, sir. As I noted before, there are certain requirements that we do as we review this, and as Mr. Smith noted, a two-lane road can easily handle 7,000 vehicles a day. A highway, you're getting on up 15,000 vehicles a day, that's not uncommon. So again, it's not an issue of capacity. Certainly, we can argue about the overall safety condition, because again, the road is narrow. One of the biggest things, and there's a significant portion of this road that's what we call turtlebacked, it's very highly humped and rolled over. Again, it's a little difficult to drive on. So again, any improvement out there, any widening certainly brings that road up into a much safer condition. It does address some of those issues that we know are there today, and makes it better. And I've actually talked to the developer about this, were he able to obtain additional right-of-way in a reasonable manner? He would probably be willing to go to the full 24-feet of pavement out there. But again, one of the biggest things, and you guys know this with some of the capital projects we do, oftentimes it takes us more money to acquire right-of-way than it does to actually improve a road. That's one of the things he's dealing with right now. He has no authority to acquire right-of-way. One of the things I would say to the citizens, that they're really concerned about this, dedicate the right-of-way, and let's find a way to find construction money, and this might be the way. But again, that's one of the significant things we have to deal with. But again, the widening of this pavement, the flattening of this pavement, certainly it would be much safer to have closed drainage and curb and gutter, he just doesn't have that ability in this time, but he does meet the requirements of a required traffic impact study to say, as far as capacity, this meets the requirements.
But some of those things you just talked about could be futuristically corrected.
Yes, sir.
It could be put in the, it could be put in our plan as far as correcting it in the future, if we could find dollars to do that.
Yes, sir.
And you know as well as I know that we, a lot of the roadwork we've done at this point in a lot of different areas of Suffolk, that money has come from kind of going after grants, going after highway money, and there's a whole category I'm not going to talk about, because not everybody's going to understand it, of what it takes to get to that point. But even some of the road corrections that we've, like, got going on today, 58 for instance, or some of the other roadways that we're going to correct, it would be nearly impossible in any short time to go on and make those road corrections on city dollars alone, with the commitments that we have throughout, all the things that we have to provide to the citizens of Suffolk on a day-to-day basis. Half the time you come up and you say, well, we got a grant from the feds, or we got a grant from the state, whatever. That's how some of these road corrections have been gotten and done, or coming up to be done, that we're in the process of doing now, that we've been dealing with for probably 10 years or better, maybe longer than that in some of these cases. I have this report in front of me, and I wanted to just ask you about it. Since 10 October 24th of 17, to October 6th of '22, the incidents on that roadway alone, with the traffic that's based on there today, you had two mirror strikes, and that was probably driver error on the mirror strikes. You had one to three deer strikes, which is, that's not the road problem, that's just, that's nature. You had five to seven people that ran off the road, for whatever reason, that's another driver error that caused them to go off the roadway. It wasn't because somebody ran them off the roadway, they just didn't manipulate the road, whatever reason they went off. School buses, to this date, there has nothing been issued on my piece of paper that says that a school bus has had an issue maneuvering that roadway, passing each other or otherwise. Do you see at this point with the road corrections today, well, what they are now, what the road corrections are going to be, do you simply see an issue with two buses passing each other on that road safely?
No, sir. A school bus generally is somewhere between seven and a half and eight feet wide. So again, at worst case, let's say six, eight feet, that's 16 feet of required passing space. They can go to eight foot, four inches, it's very rare to see a bus that large, but even at 16 feet, at a 20-foot road, you've got four feet, if you're hugging the edge lines on either side, you've got four feet between the buses. If, if, if less than that distance is an issue, we have an issue all over the city, because the vast majority of our secondary roads are less than 20 feet wide.
Okay, so with that being said, the road the way it is today has been that way for how many years?
My entire life.
Okay, okay, so, we, we're not, you know, we're not magically going to change something here that's already been the way it is and would continue the way it is than what we would today if we changed and put the roadway corrections in with this development coming. I mean, it's just simple to my mind that, you know, any corrections of a roadway, period, has to greatly enhance the mode of vehicle operation, safety of a driver traveling on that road, whether it's 7,000 vehicles or whatever, you know. This development, when it's built out, is going to take a number of years. This is not coming out of the ground tomorrow, there's a whole lot of things that got to happen, and by the time this is done, in the next five, maybe seven years, if you're lucky, based on the market, not everybody's going to come out of that development at one time. Now, where do you think most of the vehicles are going to exit when they come out of that development? In your mind, looking at the traffic that you see, that we're going to have coming out of this development, are they going to go left, right, or both?
Both.
So, there's no one group of people, and everybody, I don't know any 207 units of houses, that everybody is going to exit out of them houses all at the same time, at 5:00 in the morning, or 6:00 in the morning, or 5:00 in the afternoon? I mean, they don't come out of my neighborhood like that, most neighborhoods they don't. Everybody is on different wave time, or different stagger time in order to come and go. So, I'm just putting it in perspective here, I just don't understand how everybody gets wrapped around that, oh my gosh, the sky's falling, we're going to have 207 homes eventually, and everybody's going to drive out on that road today, and there's going to be major incidents. I just find that hard to put in my mind. And I've heard a lot of, we violate this, we've done now, Mr. Lewis, you can sit down if you'd like.
Thank you.
I've heard a lot of violations, we violated this, we violated that. I'm going to take a second to swing myself to the city attorney, and ask the city attorney, are these folks that have spoke tonight, are we in a position that we have violated anything in the UDO, or any state violations that you are aware of to date?
Well, as city council's attorney, I can provide you with legal advice, either in a closed session or by a separate memo to you, but your, my communications with you are confidential.
Okay, all right. I'm just, was going to ask that question, but I'll swing back to you. I can always go to Kevin, and ask some, I'll ask you some of these questions, Kevin. I mean, I'm just, I'm curious of the planning department, when you start the process and you get started with an application comes through the door, and you start putting all of the pieces to the puzzle, and it's notorious that, how long over a span of time, since this applicant was ever brought to your office, that, how many times did you have to go back and forth to the developer to even get to where it met what we have in our UDO, or in our state ordinances? I mean, you did it over a year, did it take you a year and a half? And is that, all that was vetted out pretty well, was it not?
All rezoning applications are. In this case, it exceeded about an 18-month period between the applicant providing us information, us providing comments, and here we are today.
So you didn't find anything that we didn't, as a city, do that would prohibit us from having this application come through the process?
No, sir.
Okay, great. You can go ahead. A couple of the things that I want to go through, and I'm going to do this as long as it takes, because I've heard over an hour of everybody else, so I'm going to take my time, and just be patient. I've heard about schools, and I can tell you that there is some issues with student population in schools, we all know it, it's no secret, if you have kids in schools. We heard a teacher come up and said, well, you know, we ought us to stop the development until we get the school process right, we're short teachers. You can turn on any news channel of the major networks on a daily basis, and all you hear around the country is a shortage of teachers, a shortage of classrooms, a shortage of materials, I mean, it goes on and on and on. This council affords a very good amount of your tax dollars to the school system, a good sizable amount. We just went on and are in the process of replacing JFK. We did Florence Bowser and Fred Cherry in the last five years. Yes, these schools come with a price tag. All these schools are not going to get replaced in the very near future. It's impossible to do it with your tax dollars, unless you want the tax rate to go completely in a point where you would probably wish you were not living in Suffolk, because you got to get the money from somewhere. The money's not flowing from the federal government, the state, like it used to. We fight to get these grants and dollars to help us with different programs within the school, and in some cases, we even try to find money for school construction, and sometimes we hit it a little bit, sometimes we don't. What happens is, when we have to build a school, and all the money's not there, we can, we can only take and take a certain amount, and borrow a certain amount of money that puts up against the tax rate as far as what we can borrow, as far as what we can go up against, because we have a threshold that we have to stay in. We don't have an open checkbook to be able to go out, and we know there's problems with schools, but equally, as many of you people are in here talking, you don't want this zoning, I dare to say, how many of you ever went to a school board meeting and sat in front of them and complained about the conditions in the schools, because they have a way to fix this? And they can fix this, they can fix this with everybody, the citizens as well as the school board and the school administration, and we have worked as a council diligently to try to get the schools as much as we can give them. I mean, it just, it's not that we haven't helped them, but the point is, is they could rezone some of these schools and fix their problems immediately. This is not hard. The problem has been that the parents that are in their little pocket areas where their kids go to school don't want that. It's not, it's not a myth here. I went through this when they tried to rezone about four or five years ago, it was, it was like a lynching in here. So, you got to give and take somewhere, and if somebody can tell me how much tax pressure you want to take for us to build every school that needs to be rebuilt, send us a message and say, I'm willing to pay, you know, $2 on the tax rate, you know, instead of $1.67, tell me, we'll take a look at it. But until we can find funding, and this is not just unique to Suffolk, you go around the country, this is the same, there's many schools that are in much worse shape around this country than you have in the city of Suffolk. There's no denying, there's some population out there that has definitely got pockets of more students than others, but there's a fix for it, but it takes, it takes everybody to fix it. It can, you can't dump it on one group of people. Counsel, you're not doing your job. Now, you left out a big component, the council funds money to the school system, we don't tell them how to spend it. They spend it the way they want to spend it. We don't tell them the programs to take and do, we don't tell them all those things. So, it gets down to who pays it. Well, you, the citizen, pays it, just like you pay your water bill, just like you pay every other tax that you have that comes to your front door. You know, the UDO, or the 2535 Plan, goes back to the establishment of, and it goes back to exactly when it was brought up five years ago. Came before this council, the 2035, 2035 Plan came before this council. And part of that is the background on land rights and use of land. And in there specifically, and before I get to that, when it came to this council, my colleague, Councilman Johnson, made the proposal, made the motion to approve this 2035 Plan. Plain and simple, go back and look at the record. Who seconded it? I did. Because at the time, this was made, and we're now working the 2045 Plan, that we are now working on, that'll come out probably the end of this year, we voted on it. It was a straight-up vote. But in there, it says specifically, the central growth area has been expanded to include three areas. Those three areas are Godwin Boulevard, Lake Kilby Road, and Turlington Road. But this specific type of development or rezoning, because it meets the criteria for those areas, because it's within the inner ring suburban, it's there, it's where it is, it's where it was said to go. Now, I'm not sure where everybody's coming from here, I've heard a lot of good, bad, and ugly here, but the one thing that strikes me, and I want to read a letter that came to me today, it shows me the character of, and I hate to say it, and this is not directed to every one of you that is part of the Cares for Suffolk group, but this letter came to me today from a gentleman, Wayne Boyce, and it says, and this is a very offensive, attacking letter of a government city official. This is a direct attack. This is not something I wrote, this is something that was on the Cares for Suffolk Facebook that was distributed out. And it says, "I have an idea, Brian," and it's Brian Harris, "would you drive one bus, and I will drive the other, and we will fill the buses with city council members, their spouses, children, and grandchildren, and we will pass each other in front of the proposed Lake Kilby site, and we'll see how they vote after everyone is released from the hospital." Barbara Natt needs to donate some of his vote-buying money to overseas. So, what you're telling me, this is somebody that's a part of your group, your Cares for Suffolk group, that puts a threatening statement in front of a council, and it's not just me, it's everyone up here that got this. This is despicable, and if this is the kind of representation you want to bring to Suffolk, you need to rethink it, because bullying, threatening, is not going to work. This doesn't help. This doesn't help you. This is not over for me about this statement. I am pursuing every and all avenues for prosecution of people involved in this. There's one thing to come up here and disagree and bring, and I listen to everybody that comes here, whether you like what I say or don't, it's, it's, it's what it is. I sit here, and I'm sorry that you don't like it, but I try to listen to everybody and take everybody's into consideration. But the point is, you come here respectfully. I don't disrespect you, don't disrespect me. And the last thing you do, and the thing about it, when he writes another letter out to me and everybody, he speaks about, he has three grandchildren. Now, a man that would write something like this to a council member, and a council must not think very much of his own family to bring this kind of thing forward, and you want to try to ask council to support something of this magnitude that is degradating? This is hostile. This is inexcusable, and if it was your family being attacked, you wouldn't like it either. Not one of you sitting out there, not one. I don't, and I'm not through. I'm going to make a motion to approve this rezoning tonight. Had enough.
We've got a motion on the floor from Councilman Fawcett for approval. Councilmember Butler Barlow.
I'm sorry.
There we go. I'm sorry.
Are you waiting for a second?
No, no, nobody's second. I'm just, no, I'm hitting buttons. Buttons come in order.
So this is just for comments?
You're next.
Thank you.
Then you're next.
I'm not sure where to start. I think that the situation that we're in tonight is symptomatic of what's going on in the city of Suffolk. All of us on council get calls regularly on our overcrowded roads, on the speed of development, on the crowding, and on the fact that our basic infrastructure, which would include roads, schools, safety, and other services, are not keeping up with the speed of the development that we're experiencing. This is one neighborhood. I think 204 houses is what's proposed. If we would stay with the current zoning, which was in the 2035 plan, which is appropriate to the surrounding communities, which is rural estate, it would be about 30 homes. So we're not talking about thousands of new residents or thousands of new buildings, but we are talking about what is going on in our city at this point. And I, for one, don't see that our infrastructure is keeping up with the rate of growth. We're adding houses, and we're adding residents. I think we're, what, are we number eight in the state in growth? So we're experiencing challenges because we are growing at a really rapid rate. And I'm not saying that growth is bad. I'm just saying that we're struggling with the pressures and the growing pains that we're experiencing. Our schools, redistricting would solve the problem. People don't have an appetite for that. At the existing rate, Elephant's Fork, I think our, the teacher that spoke said, "We're going to be going up towards 150% capacity," which is just not acceptable for our students. We're currently at Elephant's Fork at 120%, also not acceptable. So I think that the problem tonight is that we have ongoing infrastructure situations that are not keeping pace with the speed of the development that's going on in the city. And I think that our schools are being hurt by this. I think we're all experiencing traffic problems, and I think we're all experiencing lacking service from, you know, from city, just city services. And I don't, again, this is one development. This is one development. I, for one, think that the current R E zoning is appropriate. It's what the surrounding neighborhoods exist, you know, that exist, that we've got R E on all sides, R L, and some industrial and some commercial. It was good for the 2035 plan. I think it's still appropriate for the area. If we don't have increased density, we don't have the pressure on the roads and the schools. So we don't necessarily need, we always need proffers. $2 million would be great for a plan for a new school, but it's not going to touch the problem, and if we don't have an increase in the number of houses, we don't have that size of a problem. We have less, less pressure on our infrastructure. The idea that things are bad all over, so it's okay that it's bad here, I think is misguided. I would like for us to set the example and to show the rest of the country how to do We've, we've enjoyed excellent growth in the city of Suffolk. We've enjoyed, well, or we've experienced a tremendous amount of new housing. I know we still don't have adequate housing. I know that we still don't have affordable housing at the, at the numbers that we need. And again, this 204 house proposal is not going to fix that problem either. The other thing I would like to say is I resent the individuals that have been involved in this project that have pitted our citizens against each other. We all live in Suffolk. We all want the best for our community, and we all want to do what's right for all of our citizens. So the idea that we should be sitting on opposite side of the room, you know, fists up, ready to go, is really disappointing to me, because I think we can all work together for the better of our city, and I hope that's what this council does. I started out by saying I think this is symptomatic of what we're going through as a city. I don't think it's this individual project, but I think that we all just kind of have growth fatigue. And I think we've had conversations to the side about tapping the brakes, about having a pause, about giving the infrastructure a chance to catch up, about finding the funding to do the projects that we need to do, instead of doing the projects and then trying to fix them later. And I think that we would, I think we would serve our community well to keep the R E zoning that is currently on this property and to consider a hard look at the rate of growth that is happening all across the city. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward?
He made a motion. I'm going to second that.
You're going to second Councilman Fawcett's motion for approval?
Yes.
Okay, we have more buttons on. We do have a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, which has been seconded by Vice Mayor Ward. Councilman Johnson.
Number one, Roger, thank you for remembering that I did the 2035 plan, and I did, and I support it fully. Did it have some mistakes? Possibly. Is it up for interpretation? It is. I don't know what your point was, but the point being, I do support it entirely. I support my friend over here entirely, and I told him, Kevin, I think you're doing a great job. Do I agree with this rezoning? She stole some of my thunder, but I happen to think that rural is okay. And I think in any part of our city that we're going to have an R E zoning, it should be right where it is. The whole community is R E zoning. As far as Reverend Fitzgerald, diversity, inclusiveness, you don't live in the same Suffolk I do, because in Holy Neck and in parts of this city, I know there is some devices to that there. I don't question that, but this council doesn't tolerate it. And I don't, my communities are full of all kinds of people, and I've talked to all of them, I mean, honestly. And I, you go down Pitchkettle Road, or go down Lake Coon Road, or Lake Kilby, and find a person on those roads that does not want to see this. These are their homes. You're getting where, we've already kind of destroyed their community with the 460 project, which we've accepted, we're going to move forward, and we're going to do the best we can with it. But to do this in these communities that make Suffolk such a unique place, why do we want to keep doing this? We, we want, we want the developers. We want to have a good relationship with the developers, but it can't be all about the developers. It's got to be about what's best for our city. And I have no clue that, that, that we won't stop this thing, but do I think it's in the best interest of the city? I do not. I don't think it's in the best interest of anyone, including you guys that think it's such a great thing. We can build communities. We've got to do something about housing, for God's sake. My son, my 36-year-old son, can't even rent an apartment. Everything's gotten so expensive. My point being, we've got to do that as a group. This is what we need to be doing, not causing divisiveness. I was thunderstruck when I, I'm sorry. This is not the way I do business, and it's not the way I want to see my city do business. This is disturbing. It is so disturbing to me. I'm sorry. My point being, though, let's back up for a minute and get back to the real point here. The point is, this is a zoning issue. It is our responsibility to decide the best zoning for this city. I honestly think that that farm is zoned in the best interest of this city. That is what I think, and I've thought it from day one, and you all know how I feel about it, because I've thought it. I don't know why we wouldn't, we, we need this kind of housing. We also need other housing, and we need tighter housing, and we need housing everybody can afford, but when we build these houses, what are we looking at, Mr. Arnett? $350,000? Is that housing we all can afford? Pardon me? Well, no. Now, my point being, though, for so many people in this country and in this city, $350,000, $400,000 is out of their range. We need to find other types of way to do housing that we can all afford it, but we also don't want to exclude those folks. I'm, I'm, wait a minute, let me finish what I've got to say here. I'm also concerned about the density of the community, and say what we will about the traffic, but Mr. Robert Lewis, you know us well as I do. I've ridden those roads my whole life. Last night, I was riding one more time. I've been down there every day this week, and I went in the ditch. You can't go down that road and not go in the ditch. So to put another 400 cars on the roads, what are we doing? What are we doing? Let's get 58 finished. Let's get our community straight. Let's go across the road to Kilby Shores and fix that community as far as traffic goes. Kilby Shores School, we've got a problem with traffic. We can't, to me, as a council, I think we are being a little over the top, thinking we can keep allowing all this development until we get our house in order, and I don't feel like it's in order. Have any of you been in Elephant's Fork School lately? And that's where these kids are going to go to school? I'm sorry. We, as a city, should be very disturbed that we haven't fixed that school yet or made some improvements. The maintenance needs to happen. And I'm, I'm out of line, and I don't, I don't, didn't, I said I wasn't going to be out of line tonight, but I am going to be out of line because of, I've been put out of line, and I'm sorry. But this is not the way I want to see our city grow. So I personally am not opposed to these developers. I'm not opposed to development. I'm not opposed to meeting with developers, but I am opposed to cramming development in areas that we don't, I don't think it's the right thing to put there.
But is it personal?
Pardon, no, I don't answer questions. That, that's what you don't have to do up here. You don't have to answer questions, except on your phone when you have 47 people call you. I'm going to be, one more minute, and I'm going to leave everybody alone. I just, I just want you to be assured that I don't think there's a single person sitting on this council that doesn't want to do the right things for this city and move us in a positive direction, and that's why we're all sitting up here. And we all have different backgrounds. Some of us feel more about development than others. I know you guys have to make a living, the developers make a living, have to make a living. In order to do that, they need land to build on, but trust me, there's plenty of land here. There's plenty of land right out in my borough. I can point you to some farms that are ready to be developed and in the right positions, and they're not, not in such a place that we're going to have such traffic problems. But this community right now, it's not right. I'm sorry. In fact, I'll say I'm sorry. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Richter?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's certainly been some interesting discussions, and I'm going to try to keep my comments as brief as I can, and hopefully on at least what I think is a level playing field. So here I go. Mr. Mayor, I think as most of y'all know, I'm an optimist. I always try to look for positives where I can find them, but, you know, I don't completely ignore the negatives. And what we have going on here tonight, to me, is, is a positive. It's a feel-good situation despite some of the things that have been said. The city of Suffolk is growing, which is, you have pointed out, and has been pointed out by the news media and everybody, I think, in this room. People and businesses seem to want to come here. We have the open space and the opportunity to choose between living in a downtown condo style to living on a 100-acre-plus farm and pretty much everything in between. We also are in close proximity to the other cities and Hampton Roads, and in 20 to 25 minutes, you can be just about anywhere within them. And as you've repeatedly said, Mr. Mayor, is that this pressure is a problem, but it is a better problem than a lot of the alternatives that we could have. The other good news is that since the Port 460 project issue came around, we have a very active and engaged citizenry, and the level of community engagement is elevated, and I think that's a good thing, is it brings many more perspectives, ideas, and analysis to these projects. Before the 460 rezoning applications, before the 460 project, rezoning applications typically brought out a small handful of folks, and they were mostly those who were in the median area of the property that was in question. If a rezoning was a body, then the discussions at that time would amount to no more than a few minor cuts and scrapes. Port 460, using that same analogy, we severed a major artery. So here we are, one group on one side and another group on the other side. Who is right? Fortunately, we have at least the first layer of referees, and that is in the comp plan and in the U D O. If the rezoning request doesn't match the comp plan and the U D O, it had better be a very unusual project and a very much-needed project if it ever hoped to see the light of day. The next layer is the staff that receives and analyzes the project and recommends either approval or denial. Next up is the planning commission that also reviews the products, the, the projects, and receives the first round of public input, and then finally, it gets to this body. So here we are. Mr. Lewis, I know you're, you're like me, getting a little up there, but do you think you could use those knees one more time to come to the podium? There's been a lot of talk tonight about the right-of-way down Lake Kilby Road. I know that some of the parcels down Lake Kilby Road are divided from larger parcels. I know that our minor subdivision ordinance now would have required some dedication of right-of-way for a future roadway project and expansion, but I guess a lot of these lots that exist along Lake Kilby Road, that right-of-way was never, never dedicated?
Yes, sir. At various times and for various reasons, there may be a dedication of property required. As you know, oftentimes, if you take a master parcel, and even today, and you cut additional parcels off, the additional parcels have to make dedication, but the master parcel does not. So I've not studied this and looked at every specific parcel down there, so there's a few of those parcels that were divided in the past that have had to make some right-of-way dedication, so there is some additional right-of-way in a few locations. The vast majority of these parcels did not. They were cut prior to a lot of our rules and regulations, and they matched the existing 30-foot right-of-way.
So at this time, you're not 100% sure, or can't tell us with any certainty, how much land would actually have to be acquired, either through voluntarily selling to the city or through eminent domain, to, to get at least to something more acceptable?
So if we were going to, if we were going to do a public road project there, we'd be trying to acquire a clear 50-foot right-of-way, 25 feet on each side of the center line. Again, this is a 30-foot prescriptive easement that was part of the Bird Act road. So generally, it would be 10 feet on each, additional right-of-way on each side of the road. Again, some properties have already had to dedicate, most of them have not. So most of these properties would probably have to have an additional 10-foot dedication.
And in, in your experience, and I know you've got a lot of it, how long do you think that process would take to acquire those right-of-ways, those necessary right-of-ways?
If money were available today, it would probably be somewhere in the order of two years to acquire, with as many property owners as we've had to deal with to acquire right-of-way.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. There's been a lot of discussion also, you know, about how this property aligns with the 2035 comp plan, and I'm not, I know that this comp plan that we're operating with now, the 2035 plan specifically addresses Lake Kilby Road as part of the growth area, and I believe also the 2026 comp plan also identified Lake Kilby Road as being part of the growth area. So the fact that we're here tonight should probably not be a huge surprise to anybody. So then you kind of have to ask yourself, you know, I don't, I So then you kind of have to ask yourself, you know, I don't, I, I'm not a, I'm not an expert planner, despite having spent 16 years on the planning commission. They didn't teach me everything. But, and I'm, so I'm not 100% sure what the zoning of this property should be, whether it should be RLM or RM. But one thing I can pretty much be reasonably certain of is that I don't think RE is the correct zoning designation. And I say that because I got to look, and as a Realtor, I look at the parcel view or a lot when we're checking out properties. And so I got to look in at the properties that are up on the north end of Lake Kilby Road as you approach Pitch Kettle Road. And it just looked to me like a lot of the properties there were not three acres or more. So I went and actually pulled up each individual parcel, and on the Lake Kilby side of the road, the average lot size is 1.45, 425 acres. Most of them are just barely over an acre. So they don't, i- i- if somebody wanted to do something and they had to submit an application to the, to the city, more than likely, their property would be considered a, quote, "legally non-conforming use." And that's just on this Lake Kilby side of it. And if you look at Lake Kilby Road, Lake Kilby, and, and the reason why this is in the growth area is that Lake Kilby Road kind of frames in, at least this side of Lake Kilby Road, frames in between Pitch Kettle Road, the bypass, and Holland Road down towards the south of it. If this project was on the, on the western side of Lake Kilby Road, my attitude about it would probably be a little bit different. But I think with it being on the eastern side of Lake Kilby Road, I think it very much matches up with what the growth intentions of the city are. And, you know, just as an aside, you know, Lake Cahoon Road, i- i- if you take a, take a right or a left, depending on which direction you're coming from, and go down Lake Cahoon Road, that is also zoned RE, a significant number of those lots are nowhere near three acres as well. As a matter of fact, some of them even fall below a half-acre status. So, you know, once again, just pointing out, I don't think that RE is the correct zoning designation for this, now whether it should be RL or RM, I'm not 100% sure. But even with the RM designation that they're asking for and the density that they're asking for, I think there's only about a .8 unit per acre difference between what the maximum, or between what the maximum under an RLM and what this proposed density is. Kevin, help, help, help. Okay. Thank you very much. You know, so with that, obviously, the issue is the road. But I think the developer is doing everything within the right-of-way that he has to do everything he can to improve the road. Whether this gets passed or not, school buses are still going to be traveling that road. Horse trailers are still going to be traveling that road. Cars are still going to be traveling that road. Granted, if this gets approved, there are going to be a few more cars on the road. I don't think the school bus trips are going to be anymore, because there's already going through the neighborhood. But, you know, w- with that, I, I, I think, I think this is, this is okay. I, I don't think it's the potential end of the world that people are envisioning. And, and, and I think it's okay to rezone this. I, I do think it matches up with the comp plan. The provisions in the UDO are being addressed, and, and so with that, I would be willing to support it.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Um, I'm, see how I can put this. I'm trying, I was thinking, I'm listening to the councilmen and just to see how, which way it was going with it. But some of what both councilors said makes sense, but some of the things that one councilman has said is a fact, that certain people can make the decision that will probably stop what really is going on. And a lot of time, as a councilman, I get up here and I try to say certain things, but sometimes I just can't sit and listen, because I visit that area, and, and I went to one of the people, a person's houses out there, and it's a nice area. And it's the area that I said, man, I would like to be out here. So what I'm saying is that, over and over, we hear about Northern Suffolk, where I stay at. Everything is in Northern Suffolk. So this is what the, the ideas of some of the people. And most people, if you know, when you get territorial, you like to be in a certain area, you just don't move out that area. But as we see, and this is something that might start to happen, when there have been new houses built down downtown Suffolk by East Washington and all that, they don't have this opportunity. Do developers come down there? So now, a developer's side to build in that area, that encourages some of the people that live downtown Suffolk, possibility want to live there. So what, what I'm saying is that they don't want to move in Northern Suffolk. They should have opportunity to move somewhere else and in a different area. So here we talking about, it's not because, you know, we, you don't want them there, but they building houses. Until they start building housing in the area they stay, what do you want them to do? If they build it, they will come. So I, I know you might be saying, well, we ain't saying that, but you know how a lot of times, what it look like? Sometimes you gotta think what it look like. You gotta, sometimes I gotta think how I say it. But what I'm saying to you, I think it's a great opportunity for people who want to go there and not go to Northern Suffolk. So I think it's a good opportunity for that. I went and visited the side, the screeks and stuff like that, and I found out what the community wanted the developer to do or, and so forth, and the developer came back with new ideas. And, you know, and I have talked to him a couple of times. So right now, we sitting here talking about when. You know, it was a, it was a history one time in civil rights, and, and people kept telling him to wait. When? The opportunity is there, and if it can be done, I think they should be able to come and move in that community. But the way, I never looked at it as one-sided thing. And I, hopefully, it wouldn't go that way, but that's the what it look like when you got so much denial or fight. So unfortunately, it's, it's looking like that, but I don't think the intent was there, but it's looking like that. And I, you know, so I, I think that, um, what didn't happen, if they have an opportunity to move there, I think there shouldn't be no stopping. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Fossett?
Yep. I've got one last thing.
Be brief?
We're good.
Be brief?
The one thing I, I want to bring up is, I want to thank Ben Fitzgerald for coming up and pointing out a couple of factors. Diversity and inclusion. This housing, if it becomes housing over there, is an equal opportunity for everyone. This is equal opportunity. And the idea that the houses are 400 or 500,000, I disagree with you that people can't afford to buy them, because if you go around, you go around, the average home today is in that price range, if not more. Now, I've heard some people insinuate that, who's going to buy these houses? Well, we're trying to get businesses and manufacturers to come here, and we've, and we've had a good start with Amazon and, and Osmo Zenettis and the Target, you know, and all these things we got, Ace and all this group that's out there. They have many employees. Nexcom is a perfect example. Nexcom came from Norfolk, Naval Station Norfolk, it came out here to Suffolk. And the problem that he had when he brought that business group out here is he lost a number of employees, because they said there wasn't adequate housing for the money they were making. They couldn't find that suitable home, so they lost those employees. Get, get it real out here. People are making good money today, and you can't discount anybody of any kind of way, shape, or form, white, Hispanic, African-American, Asian, or whatever. They're all looking and getting better-paying jobs, and they want to live in good communities.
Yes.
And this is where we're trying to put a good community that meets the criteria for RM to go in there and give people the right opportunity to have the right to live, because the one thing that strikes me is probably not everybody in this room came from Suffolk or was born in Suffolk. And think about it, there's only a fraction of 95,000 people in this room that live in Suffolk. So you came to Suffolk from somewhere, trust me. But all of a sudden, you're sitting in an area that you're fine there, but you don't want anybody around you. You don't want nobody around you. You want that same every day.
Subject.
So I'm just telling you, diversity and inclusion and equal opportunity is where it's at today, and that's where you got to get your head.
Do we have any other questions or comments before I do mine? Everybody's mind's clear. Okay, I had a few prepared remarks, and I'm going to, based on what's transpired tonight, maybe go off subject a little bit, because I think we have actually gone off subject a little bit. What, what we're dealing with is a land use issue. It's a rezoning. Rezoning is a land use issue. And we have kind of veered off course to a certain extent. Not that there are not legitimate concerns that individuals have concerning this project. I'm a little disheartened by, well, I'm a little bit more than disheartened by some of the rhetoric and, and some of the inferences that were made. You know, maybe I live in a different world, but, you know, as, as mayor of this great city, and it is a great city, that's why so many people want to move here. You know, we got people who want to move here, we don't have enough room for them. That's a pretty enviable position to be in. And I've, as I've stated more times than once, that is not a problem. That's a challenge. How do we deal with the influx of individuals that want to move to our city because of what we have to offer, which is really a lifestyle for just about anyone looking for anything? Urban, suburban, rural, you name it, we got it, among other things. And we, I feel like we do a fairly good job managing what we have. The people that want to move here, they want to raise their families here. And I believe that, having lived in this city not quite as long as a lot, but I've been here going on 46 years, and I look at the demographics of our city as to how it looked 46 years ago. And I'm proud of where our city is. I look at the diversity that we have in, in most of our neighborhoods. I mean, I'm kind of, I don't get that a whole lot, but I, I'll, I'll just use Hill Point for an example and some of the other ones. I look at the diversity of our city, and I believe people from all walks in life want to move to our city. That's why we have this challenge. Suffolk was recently selected number 78 of the top 100 cities in the United States for growth. There was not another city in the whole entire Commonwealth of Virginia in the top 100. So I do not want to see anything whatsoever that would have an adverse effect on where we are right now. We need to be where we are, we need to improve upon it. But every decision we make, especially when it comes to issues like this, we weigh the positives and the negatives, and we look at the guidelines that we have, be it the comp plan, be it the UDO, be it the staff report, but the bottom line is, the buck stops here. So our decisions should take into account the recommendations of our staff, should take into account the comp plan, should take in account the UDO, but it should also take in account that, guess what? These are plans that are not etched in stone. If there's a legitimate reason to make a decision outside of those, then that's what we should be doing, or at least that's what we should, as individuals, make our decisions on. That doesn't mean it's going to be the majority, and it doesn't mean that the other side is going to be wrong. They're just looking at it from a different perspective. And what's more, what's important to me may not be as important to someone else on this dais, as far as their relevance in making their decision. But I believe everybody up here is trying to do the right thing for the right reason. There are no ulterior motives. There are no gains to be made one way or the other. There have been some compelling arguments on both sides of this rezoning application. Like I said, some of the discussions kind of detracted from the facts. I appreciate, I appreciate, number one, I do not have a problem with the development. I appreciate the applicant's willingness and everyone who comes to our city to invest in our city and the effort that has been taken in addressing the issues affecting adequate public facilities and citizen concerns. Because if it wasn't for the folks that are willing to invest in our city, we wouldn't be where we are. So there's two sides of this thing. But while we want to invite that development, we want to invite that investment, while we want to invite people into our city, and we want to be inviting, it's also essential that we continue to encourage and attracting that investment, but because that commercial investment is what generates the revenue to provide funding for the services, the schools, the infrastructure, as well as job creation. That's the business end of it. That's the economic development of it. But it's also essential to have residential growth, because that's necessary to provide adequate workforce housing and diverse housing options that will attract these individuals and families to our city, regardless of the lifestyle that they're seeking. It's equally essential that we remain committed to ensuring that development is done in a methodical, well-managed manner that will ensure quality of life, maintain the character of our city, and not place an undue burden on public facilities. I've read a great deal of information related to this rezoning. I've spoken to dozens of people in person or on the telephone. I've looked at emails. I've listened attentively to speakers at several public hearings. And in my opinion, there are two issues that provide reason for my personal concern. First is the proliferation of traffic. There does seem to be conflicting data related to this issue. The developer has made a very commendable effort to mitigate these traffic concerns, but personally, I'm not convinced the issue will be resolved to the extent necessary to ensure it does not pose a safety issue due to congestion and roadway conditions. But my main concern is completely different, and it has, it's been kind of touched on, but to me, it's a big deal. And if we're going to be concerned about growth in our city, and we're going to be concerned about public, adequate public facilities, then student generation and where these kids are going to go to school is an issue. It's a big issue. The students generated from this development will attend Elephant Fork Elementary The students generated from this development will attend Elephant Fork Elementary School, which, as was mentioned, is already 120% of capacity. And I've been in that school more than once. My granddaughter went to that school, and she's 22 now, so that was a little while ago, and it wasn't in that good a shape then. It has numerous, numerous mobile units. The mobile units themselves are in terrible condition. And in the facility study that we paid for to have done in 2021, it's the, in the top four of schools that are in need of repair, I get the FSI percentage, and it's a real close tie for third with JFK and a few of the other ones. But in 2021, City Council and the School Board received the results and recommendations of a $430,000 study. $430,000 was spent with cooperative strategy in conjunction with RRM Architects. And that facility study went through a condition assessment in every school facility, it went through projected student generation rates, and it provided recommendations, at least three alternatives in most cases, as to whether repair, replace in the same place, build new. It also offered options that involved redistricting. It offered options considering consolidation of schools. And it was all data-driven. It was a data-driven analysis based on numbers. I like numbers. Everybody's entitled to your opinion, but two and two is always going to be four, whether you like it or not. That's how it works. But it was all data-driven, had the facility condition assessments, it had the facility options, it had school capacity, and it had a cost methodology to all of it. Options were provided in the study to address elementary school capacity as well as other. Rezoning and non-zoning options were presented. So as it relates to this application, what's the point? Well, the point is Elephant Fork Elementary with no rezoning would require rebuilding along with replacing Kilby Shores Elementary and Nansaman Parkway Elementary separately. You would have to build three schools. With rezoning, Elephant Fork Elementary and Kilby Shores could be consolidated and replaced with a 1,000-student elementary school. That option would save $30 to $40 million in construction costs plus operational savings. But most notably, and what should be of particular interest to many in this room, is that it will accelerate capacity, accelerate capacity in a wide area of our city. I don't want to have a developer company and have to or need to pony up a proffer on a school rather than have the capacity available and accept a proffer on a school that may not be built for a decade or more. So the schools are an issue with me. And I specifically mention this because there has been absolutely, to my knowledge, no discussion that the school system is considering any redistricting or consolidation. Now, keep in mind, City Council's relationship with the School Board is, yeah, we can talk to them about stuff, but bottom line, give us the money, and we'll decide what we're going to do with it. That is the bottom line. They are autonomous, they are their own elected board, they make their own decisions, and we allocate funds as a lump sum. They're not designated for anything. Come to us once a year, and they want $68 million, we give them $68 million, and off we go. When it comes to the CIP, there's a negotiation process here, but bottom line is, the decision is theirs. We cannot dictate where schools are built. We can't dictate how schools are built. So it needs to become a concern not only of our citizens, but also the realtors and the building association, and that business needs to address the schools. So somebody mentioned it, we all need to work together to do the most we can with what we have as quick as we can do it. And I agree with that. So the bottom line is, the decision on the School Board, because there hasn't been any other decision, is to make, my decision must be based using the capital improvement plan submitted by the School Board, the submitted capital improvement plan, which lists Elephant Fork Elementary as the number five priority in a list of 11. Before Elephant Fork Elementary is built, JFK Middle School needs to be completed. That will be followed by an addition to Northern Shores Elementary School, and this is the School Board's CIP priority list, followed by an addition to Northern Shores Elementary, renovations at College and Career Academy, and I go along with that one because they need it, and rebuilding of Forest Glen Middle School. So realistically, given the fiscal constraints, competing needs, and borrowing limitations, and in alignment with the city's capital improvement plan, Elephant Fork Elementary School, and I say would be a minimum of six to 10 years out before completion, is probably closer to, anyhow, that's optimistic, because we got a school listed for $38 million that's probably $60 million right now. And we're getting ready to do a middle school that started off at 43, went to 52, went to 60, now we're doing some more stuff, and it's 72. John F. Kennedy Middle School with the additions they've done is now $72,000. Fortunately, we got a $15 million grant from the state, which closed a gap in funding. Without that, I'm not sure how we would have been able to make it happen. So $38 million for an elementary school right now, I think, is, you know, not very realistic. The applicant has proffered funding to advance capacity, and that's one of the things we call for in the UDO that can be used if there's no capacity. But at the same time, we have to be realistic. You know, $2.7 million to go towards a $50 million school, maybe, that might be built in six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 years from now, is relatively insignificant. More importantly, and most notably, there's no assurance because of that, and this has been mentioned, that capacity will be available in concurrent with the impacts of the development. So that means extra kids are going to Elephant's Fork. Two, three, four, five, 10, 20. And sending those kids to King's Fork is creating additional student generation, which would be an injustice and a disservice by placing an additional and tenable burden on an overtaxed staff that is operating, and when I say less than desirable environment, I'm being nice. So what do we do with the kids in the meantime, without the school getting, without having capacity in our schools? So for those reasons, at this time, because I don't have a true objection to the development, I just don't think we've satisfied those two issues. And unfortunately, from a developer's standpoint, you're not going to build a school. So it's got to be more than frustrating when it comes to, at least in my opinion, this school capacity, but I cannot personally, in good conscience, vote for this rezoning, knowing what's going on at Elephant's Fork right now. So with that being said, we've got a motion on the floor for approval. Motion was made by Councilman Fawcett, and it was seconded by Vice Mayor Water. Is there any other discussion? If not, then council members prepare to vote. Council members, please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved with council members Butler, Barlow, Johnson, and Mayor Doom voting in opposition.
Okay, at this time, I am going to call for a 10-minute recess. We will be back at 9:10. We will go to our next public hearing, which is in ordinance to amend Chapter 31 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Article 7, Supplemental Use Regulations, Section 31-714, signed regulations. This is OTA 2023-006. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Kevin Wine will provide the staff report on this item. Kevin?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you are aware, we often come before you all to refine and update our Unified Development Ordinance in areas. We feel it makes sense to do that, and this is one of those areas. It's related to electronic message board signs. We often get requests specifically from churches and other institutional uses about their desire to install signs like this. Presently, these types of signs are permitted only within RB2 district in the city. We do have supplemental standards for them to include size limitations, the fact that they can only change their messages once every 60 seconds, but really important brightness limitations, specifically at night, when these things, if they utilize the same amount of brightness they do during the day, can be quite bright at night, but no flashing, pulsing, and the messages must be static, so clean change. So what we're proposing for your consideration this evening is that in addition to the B2 zoning district where these are permitted today, as a matter of right, we would allow these signs to be located in any zoning district in the city specifically for institutional uses only. We do define institutional uses in our Unified Development Ordinance. They include churches, schools, hospitals, residential care facilities, and other public or quasi-public uses. We believe this is a good compromise on this issue, and it will allow for a variety of institutional uses to take advantage of the advantages of having a sign of this nature. So the Planning Commission, at their meeting on July 25, 2023, voted 5 to 0 to approve a resolution recommending this ordinance text amendment for your approval this evening. Additionally, staff does support this update as well. That concludes my presentation. I'll stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing with the first speaker. Please come forward and provide your name and address. Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. What is your pleasure, Councilman Johnson?
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilman Bennett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion's been approved by a vote of 8 to 0.
Our next public hearing is consideration of an appeal of the decision of the Historic Landmarks Commission in regard to request for an after-the-fact certificate of appropriateness, HLC 2023-00010, for property located at 111 Linden Avenue, zoning map 34G16, Block A, Parcel 18. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, again, Kevin Wine will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Before you this evening, and on occasion, we bring before you appeals of decisions made before the Historic Landmarks Commission. This is one of those instances as it relates to the installation of an after-the-fact permit requested by the owners of 111 Linden Avenue as it relates to a porch railing. The subject property is surrounded by properties owned RM, residential medium density, and it is within our historic conservation overlay district, which subjects it to the requirements, the guidelines of our HLC guidelines. There are some CBD, Central Business District zoning district north of the property. So here you have a before picture. There's some history here. We conducted a property maintenance inspection in March 6 of this year, and several property maintenance violations were noted. One, the safety of the porch railing in question. And then here, we have an after-the-fact picture of the property. That necessitated, that notice of violation, or the property maintenance correction, necessitated notice of violation from our department as it related to moving forward with the work without the necessary certificate of appropriateness from the HLC. So staff, with any application before the Historic Landmarks Commission, looks at the HLC guidelines and the guidance contained therein, and the UDO provisions as it relates to making changes within the historic district to historic properties. When you have a porch railing with vertical slats, much like you have on the balcony there, it would be appropriate that the repairs made match that. That is in keeping with the historic character of the property. The repairs is completed, you might not meet the objectives of the historic district guidelines, and thus, staff could not recommend their approval, and the HLC did not recommend its approval either. The applicant did make a certificate of appropriateness, rather, application to the Historic Landmarks Commission. The Historic Landmarks Commission opted to approve their HLC, or their request for a certificate of occupancy conditionally. And in one of those conditions, and they voted 8 to 1 to do that, with the staff recommended conditions, including condition number one, that the porch matched the details of the second-story porch, as noted on the previous slides I shared with you here. Staff recommends that this HLC decision be affirmed, as that condition would align with the guidance outlined in the historic district guidelines. But as you consider this appeal, you may, in conformity with the provisions of the ordinance, reverse, affirm wholly or partly, or may modify any order requirement decision or determination appealed from, and make such order requirement decision determination as ought to be made. To that end, you shall have the powers of the HLC as you consider this appeal before you this evening. That concludes my presentation on this item. I'll stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing for any questions.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Wine. Madam Clerk, before we open the public hearing, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing with the first speaker. Please come forward and provide their name and address.
Good evening. I am Bella Meier, and my business is at 424 Market Street, Suite 200. I kind of feel like small potatoes tonight, but I do appreciate your time. I'm here this evening to appeal the HLC decision made on July 13, 2023, regarding our application, HLC 2023-00010 for exterior alterations. As the owner of HUR Properties Incorporated, my family and I have been serving this city for over 100 years. My father, Buddy Yor, and I pride ourselves in offering affordable housing to our community, especially during a time when this issue has become a crisis nationwide. With that said, I was upset to hear that the commissioner at the last hearing shared a poor Google review about my family's company to the HLC prior to the board voting. I'm still uncertain why this was important to the hearing. Additionally, there were pictures, in quote, "facts," shared with the board that did not go through the proper path and were presented to my brother Hugh L. Yor Jr. while he was standing at the podium. Although these pictures did bring an interesting point to light, as you saw, there's railings to the side there, and they- point to light, as you saw, there's railings to the side there, and they are necessary because the upstairs and the downstairs tenants both have friends and roommates that are on walkers and require safety railings. When we did this repair, we simply matched the railing to the front going up the stairs, and that's what we matched around that first porch. So even though these individuals are not listed on the lease, it is still a very important thing to us that they are adequate for use. To us, the safety of the tenants supersedes the historic details. The alterations under review were done in an attempt to comply with the notice of violation issued by Inspector Rufus Winborn. Coincidentally, Mr. Winborn was a tenant of ours at that time. The notice was dated March 6, 2023. The address under review is 111 Linden Avenue, and per your documents, was built in 1895. Granted, the public document states that it was built in 1910, and other reports say that it's mid-century. I guess that's kind of neither here nor there, though, with my understanding of the historic district. We did comply, as we always try to. We complied within the 14-day period and had the required items repaired by a licensed and insured Class A contractor. Please note that the HLC could have taken up to 60 days to approve our COA, and that would have been well outside the 14-day timeframe. The repairs cost us $1,400 in labor and $310 in materials. We recognize that our obligation is to provide a sound and well-functioning home, and we do our absolute best to meet the standard. After the contractor completed these repairs, my company was notified that we didn't go through the proper HLC process. I do apologize. With that being said, we quickly paid the $262.50 COA application fee. With the above almost $2,000, that's already been put into this project, and the threat of a much larger rebuild, we are concerned about our repairs and maintenance budget. We have multiple properties throughout the city of Suffolk, and there are other repairs that we feel are more pressing and should be a priority at this time. I would like to, again, reiterate how important it is to keep affordable housing available in our area. We are currently paying 14% of our gross annual income in real estate taxes, and we're paying that same amount of our gross annual income to repairs and maintenance. Taxes, coupled with the repairs and maintenance costs, are making it almost impossible to keep our rents low. I would like to request that, moving forward, notices of violation include the requirements of historic district and any other compliances that deem necessary. If we can work together, we can satisfy the violations a little bit more efficiency, with more efficiency. We always try to comply with the City of Suffolk, so please work with us and understand that our company works hard to follow the rules and guidelines of our city while continuing to offer a service to our tenants. Thank you.
We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Before the city, before council begins its deliberation on this matter, I would like to ask the city attorney to provide counsel with an explanation regarding the potential options for action. Mr. Attorney, would you do that, please?
Yes. So normally, what comes before this body is a denial by the HLC of their certificate of appropriateness. In this particular case, the HLC has approved the certificate, but the property owner objects to the conditions that were placed on that certificate of appropriateness. Under the code, you have three choices. You can affirm the decision of the HLC. In this case, that would mean that you would be affirming the certificate of appropriateness with HLC's conditions. Your second choice is to reverse, which means that you would negate the certificate appropriateness altogether if you were to reverse that decision, or you may make a motion to modify the decision of the HLC, and if you wanted to change the conditions in the certificate of appropriateness. So those are your three choices with these types of actions.
Okay. So just to kind of put it in layman's terms, if we want to agree with the HLC's decision...
That is a motion to affirm.
That's a motion to affirm, or we can say just overturn the HLC's decision completely, which is reverse.
Reverse, yes, and that would mean the certificate of appropriateness would disappear, and the property owner would need to start the process again.
She would just start all over again, or we could modify it in some way.
That is correct.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions before we vote? I mean, before we discuss? Councilman Fawcett?
Kevin, question. I'm not on.
You are on.
Hey, Kevin, in the picture shows the rails that were put up that are obviously in violation because they don't meet the top criteria of the trim, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
But when I look at the picture, one of the pictures, oh, showing how it should be at the bottom end, it's not a real clear picture, and the fact is, I don't know how far that rail extends out in whether or not it's an adequate rail for someone to go down those stairs, being there's a top level, then one, two, three, down maybe four to the ground. So my question is, the old way is what I see here, I guess was originally there, that got rotted out, correct? And then they came back and modified it to this, correct?
Yeah, so the picture I'm showing you shows the railing as it previously existed.
I know, but I'm looking at what is, there's a picture in here that looks like what it should have been way back when, and it looked like the top piece. There's a picture right here that depicts that.
Yes, yes.
But the thing is, it doesn't indicate, I can't determine on this picture whether that rail's an adequate rail for the traveling of, you know, somebody traveling down a staircase.
Yeah, and that's a wonderful point. We run into this often with porch railings. You see this with some of our more significant architectural residential structures in the district where there's a pretty low porch railing. Long story short, those lower ones would not meet building code as it currently exists. The way the HLC conditioned this, it would still have to meet building code, but it would match an appearance, so it didn't necessarily set a height. So it would have to be adequate enough in height to be safe.
You referred to that photo right there. That photo does not depict what...
Councilman Fawcett, are you done?
Yeah, I mean, I'm done.
Yeah, hold on.
Asking the yours to do are to replace it just like that, correct?
Yes, sir.
To match the top.
Mm-hmm.
But the ones coming down are right anyway, correct?
No.
Yeah.
You finished, counsel? Councilman Johnson, are you done?
Um, yeah, I guess so. I don't know.
Counsel, you have to ask Councilmember Butler-Broiler.
Please go ahead. No, go ahead.
Hold on a minute.
I'll be quick. I'll be quick. Was the reason that it was done this way, did y'all make that decision, or did the contractor just do it trying to be cheap? I'm just curious. I mean, I want to do the right thing here, but truly, it should be replaced like that.
I do understand. I think that the contractor was trying to go on the less expensive side of things while giving it a secure railing, also in the 14-day period.
Yeah, and he charged you plenty, though.
He did. It was still, you know, almost, I guess that was $1,700 just to him, and then we turned around and did the COA. It was discussed. I know that, you know, having the bottom match the top is important. That's important to us, too. We were going to match the top to the bottom, and then all of this came to our attention, and we halted everything until we talked to y'all to figure out the best way to do it. I understand, and I appreciate history as well, and I do appreciate the landmarks and all of their beauty. On the same token, if I could keep the bottom the way that it is and match the top to the bottom, it's more financially efficient, and we could make sure that the top is to code, et cetera. I guess that that is my request, if possible. Again, we match the top to the bottom versus totally demoing the bottom and starting all over. Or I'm open to suggestions. Like I said, this is small potatoes with y'all's night tonight, but, you know, the small potatoes make for, you know, a big meal later on, and I heard lots of things tonight about affordable housing, and please understand that we do our best to keep our rents low and affordable, and sound housing and safe housing. So I guess in this situation, we put the notice of violation and our tenants' safety in front of historic detail, and for that, I apologize, but maybe make the exception and understand that sometimes we get really stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Councilmember Butler-Broiler.
So I appreciate what you all are trying to do, and I, you know, safe is the main thing, in my opinion. But what I'm afraid of is if you match, if you, so I have no problem with the way the bottom looks now with the vertical railings, but that's not going to be safe on the second-floor railings because then little people and animals can get through those.
My understanding is the top is custom, and I'm not, that's outside of my wheelhouse.
Right.
So I can't speak on that too much, but I can't, I can't go to Lowe's and get those materials.
Right, right, but you could do vertical slats.
We could do vertical slats. I just don't, again, that part's out of my wheelhouse, and I would have to go to the contractor and say, this is what they are asking.
Yeah, and I hate, I hate for you to have to do a redo, but I just, I'm afraid that the horizontal wider slats are not going to be safe on that second floor.
I understand that.
I mean, on the first floor, you fall off, it's a bump, but on the top, that's bad. So I hate for you to have to redo it, and again, I think the bottom, the way you've done it is safer and more attractive, and that's all good, but anyway, just wanted to ask that. Yeah, I know that's not standard. I live in an old house, too. Thanks.
I'm just going to offer a couple of comments. I rode down Linden Avenue, and I looked at homes on both sides of it. I did the whole block, left and right. You know, the HLC, we've got an HLC, and I understand the little conundrum there because people do things after the fact. The contractor does this, and it is, of course, we've had much worse ones where we've had after-the-fact roofs, and, I mean, we've been talking, I mean, these are 20, 30, 40, 50, $60,000 projects. It should have been replaced with something else, but the, but the HLC is tasked with maintaining the character of those structures within that neighborhood. If you travel down Linden, which I did, every single house, with the exception of two, the rails are vertical. None of them are horizontal. Now, the designs are a little different, maybe because they're from a different era, but every single one of them, those rails, top and bottom, or up and down, none of them go left or right. So I'm just going to throw that out there. I mean, from my standpoint, as much as I can empathize with what you're doing, you know, I, you know, I am going, if the vote comes up, I can't make a motion, but depending what's going on, I would affirm what HLC has requested, because it is, you know, like I said, at some point, if we're going to have these regulations, we need to kind of make sure that people adhere to them, you know, and in the big scheme of things, it is, well, it's kind of small potatoes, but, but we've, we've looked at some very big after-the-fact ones that were thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. So, with that being said, I don't know if there's any more discussion, but I need a motion from somebody for something. We're going to be here all night. Councilman Fawcett?
You know, some way, we got to give credence to the Historical Landmark Commission. So I'm just going to make a motion to affirm their decision, and...
Okay, we got a motion from Councilman Fawcett to affirm the Historical Landmark Commission's determination. Councilman Rector?
I'll second it.
And we got a second. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, our next public hearing is in ordinance amending the historic district guidelines of the City of Suffolk. This item was continued from the July 19, 2023 meeting. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Again, Kevin Wine's at the party mouth, thinking Keith was coming.
Giving Keith a break tonight on this, keeping him busy with the comp plan. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This is an item, obviously, that you heard last month. We took some guidance that we received from that meeting and hope to apply it to our updated guidelines, but you have three items. I'm going to kind of be really brief here and focus on what's changed since your last review. But there are two public hearings, one related to the historic district guidelines update. This is the handbook that gives the owners and residents and the HLC guidance as it relates to making modifications within the historic district. We have some code amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance associated with changes that would be necessary should you adopt the historic district guidelines. And then lastly, we have a very minor insignificant change to the, the city code as it relates to what we call the historic district. We're just making sure they all align, and that's a very minor change in an ordinance for your consideration. So I'm kind of, kind of getting behind everything this evening. But this is something we've been working on for quite some time. We've worked with the Department of Historic Resources, the National Park Service, really in an effort to make sure that upon the adoption of these updated guidelines, we maintain our certified local government status. It's really important to us for a variety of reasons. Primarily, we get some preferential treatment when it comes to working with DHR, and we get preference when it, grant funds are available. We worked with our consultant, Commonwealth Preservation Group, on this, who got us pretty far along. But our project goals here, we're looking at the downtown master plan recommendations. Those were made in 2018 as part of that document. We wanted to make sure that the property owners in the district and investors were informed about it, and were a huge part of the process, and ultimately wanting to promote property investment, which is something we identified as an issue. So some of our main goals here, streamlining the review procedures, we heard that in the downtown plan update, reducing applicant time, cost, and risk, and maintaining that CLG status and in compliance with those national park standards. So this is where I'm going to spend a little time, and I'm going to see if I have, okay, good, good, I do have those. So some of the key changes, a lot has shifted from an HLC approval and a longer public hearing process to an administrative staff-level approval. And that's important because it saves applicants' time. It saves staff a tremendous amount of time, and that includes things like windows and other replacement materials, small building and site improvements that currently, like fences, for instance, would have to go before the HLC. We're going to keep that in-house and save our property owners a little bit of time by allowing them to go through an administrative process. We wanted to get our signed regulations in the district consistent with the base zoning district for a variety of reasons, but that was inconsistent going into this historic guidelines update. Something that is new from your last meeting is we have incorporated language into the guideline update as it relates to paint colors. Specifically, we have refined our paint palettes. We've created a paint palette and some language that regulates paint color within the district by identifying four acceptable palettes. Color will be reviewed administratively, and colors outside of that palette may be considered by the HLC. So that's a key difference there. Here are the two pages that are new in the guideline document for your consideration this evening, but we provide guidelines for paint. This is pages 53 and 54 in the updated guidelines. I think it's really important to note, and I'll see, did I include this, we have these four color palettes. We've deemed that the appropriate colors are identified in the PPG Paints Charleston Paint Colors Collection, PPG Paints Historic Paint Collection, PPG Paints New England Paint Color Collection, and there's a Sherwin-Williams as well, Color Collection. However, they're not limited to those collections. They can utilize and match colors all they would like to because the colors may be substantially similar and not necessarily identical to those colors outlined. Should they wish to utilize colors outside of these adopted palettes... utilize colors outside of these adopted palettes, they, they can petition the HLC to do that. Otherwise, they'll be working with staff on a very minimal administrative review process to ensure that they are consistent with those selected paint colors. And I believe you all have the, the paint palettes that we've selected. It covers a broad range of colors. We're quite inclusive with it, but we did want to make sure that the palettes selected avoided obtrusive or, or obnoxious colors that folks would find not necessarily a benefit to the Historic District. So with that being said, that's kind of what I wanted to highlight this evening. You all are familiar with where it's been up to this point, but we've involved the Historic Landmarks Commission in consideration of this HLC guideline update and the associated ordinance and code amendments. And we have the recommended, recommendation of approval, as do, we have the recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. So we are presenting this for your consideration this evening. The first public hearing would be for the guideline update. You would have another public hearing for the ordinance text amendment, UDO update, and then there is an ordinance for the city code update. But my, my presentation was designed to kind of capture all of those. Yes, sir. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation. I'll stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing to address any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. What is your pleasure, Councilman Johnson?
Move for approval of this ordinance as appro, as amended.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson, followed by Councilman Rector.
I'll second the motion, but I would like to just have a quick minute of discussion, if I can.
Couldn't stand it, could you?
Please.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to ask either Kevin or Keith. We, you, you zeroed in on PPG, but I know that, like Benjamin Moore, Sherman Williams, and other people have historic color palettes, too, or whatnot. Does this, what we've got presented here in those color palettes, do they overlap with those? I mean, is there much exclusion between, between them, or they're all fairly consistent?
They're all fairly consistent. Almost every major paint brand has a historic palette. They're all pretty similar to one another. The reason we felt it necessary to create these palettes, or identify them, rather, is to give folks an idea of what they will look like and what options they have. Like I said, they, they're not required to utilize those colors. Those palettes come with hex codes, so with that, they can go to Lowe's and use whatever brand of paint they wish. But at least they have a color that's in our palette that they can work with.
But they have to pick a spec, they have to pick an exact color off of those palettes?
Yes, or substantially similar.
Or substantially similar.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Did you second that motion?
I did.
You did? Okay, I missed, I missed that part. Okay, Councilman Bennett?
I had a question for you.
Yeah, well, I got you. I got you coming.
Okay. No, I was talking to him before he said that.
Okay, well, I got to recognize you first, saying you can ask a question. There you go.
Okay. On the staff approval of materials, what type, because I had a person ask me just, just a couple of weeks ago about the different types of vinyl or whatever materials that could be used in the Historic District mainly. Is there any guidelines on that?
Yeah, there are, there are substantial guidelines on that. And it's important to note that the last time we did a real update of our Historic Guidelines, some 20, 30 years ago, there had been an advancement in the quality of alternative materials, specifically vinyl, that just didn't exist at that time. So what we're more interested now, moving forward, and the guidelines speak to this, is not necessarily the material used as much as it being able to match and design. So there are products out there that do match and design. Now, will it be the cheapest vinyl window you can get at Lowe's? Probably not. But there will be a vinyl window there that does a good job of mimicking the historic window you have. And, and the HLC guidelines allow us an opportunity to consider that, one administratively, and recommend approval of.
Same thing with siding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I need to find. Thank you.
Counsel, any other discussion in the motion? Hearing none. We've got a motion on the floor from approval. Can I remember who made the motion now? Councilman Rector seconded it. Okay, Council Johnson made the motion, seconded by Council Rector a long time ago. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to amend Chapter 31 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 4, Zoning, Section 31-402, Establishment of Zoning Districts, Section 31-404, Zoning Map Table 404-1, Section 31-408, parentheses, N, parentheses, 2, Specific FRRD District Criteria Approval Process, Section 31-413, Historic Conservation Overlay Districts, Section 31-420E, Location and Design, and Section 31-420F, Streets and Alleyies of the Code of the City of Suffolk. This is OTA 2023-04. And this was incorporated into Mr. Wine's presentation. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public meeting. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilman Johnson?
Move for approval.
Move for approval, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Rector.
Second.
Second from Councilman Rector. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Councilmember Rector, can you please cast your vote? Thank you. The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our last ordinance is an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 7, Historic Landmarks Commission, Section 2-323, Qualifications, Vacancies, Removal, Compensation, and Section 2-324, Duties of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Virginia. This is OTA 2023-3. And this item was also continued from July 19, 23 council meeting. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As Kevin previously said, this is just a amendment to the ordinance which clarifies the Historic Landmarks Commission within the code section.
Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
A motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Councilperson Butler-Bartlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler-Bartlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, if you'd be so kind to record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we have no resolutions this evening. We have no staff reports. We do have several motions. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing for the September 6, 2023 City Council meeting regarding authorizing the issuance and sale of stormwater revenue bonds, and a motion would be ordered. Councilman Rector?
So moved.
Councilman Bennett?
Second.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Bennett, and a second by Councilman, no, I'm sorry, from Council Rector, and a second by Councilman Bennett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for the September 6, 2023 City Council meeting regarding authorizing the issuance and sale of General Obligation Public Improvement Bonds, Series 2023, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our final motion this evening is a motion to schedule a City Council work session for Wednesday, September 6, 2023, at 4:00 PM unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Ward?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Vice Mayor Ward. Councilman Williams?
Second, that, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're now going to move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers in this? So please explain the guidelines.
We do have, we do have one non-agenda speaker this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speaker" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer, and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Stacy Falls, 6077 Camilla Drive, Unit B, representing self regarding public safety. Is Ms. Falls present? That concludes the speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
We do have nominations. There are nominations for the respective boards and commissions. The nominees are as follows. For the, for the Suffolk Clean Community Commission, Susan P. Davis, Alexandra Hobgood, Pamela Kearns, and W. Michael Lane. And for the Sister Cities Commission, Mary Ann Persons.
Counsel, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
Second, that, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to announcements and comments. At this time, I'll ask if media and community relations director Jennifer Moore has any announcements. What hap, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. I would just like to ask the city manager to direct the city manager to own the schools, the $2 million sinkholes that they were, we had talked about during the budget process, and was waiting to whether the state was going to give the funding, fully funded for that. And I was under told that that was not happening. And we have a safety concern out there with the potholes, at the sinkholes. So I would like to bring that back for the $2 million for the schools, for the sinkholes. Do I need to make a motion on that?
I've got a question before we make the motion. The request for the funding from the school system should come from the superintendent to the manager, I believe, be it for 1.6 million or 2 million.
I think he did talk to the city manager.
Mr. Manager, have you gotten any requests? Because it was my understanding that $2 million was brought up initially, and we talked about being used for safety concerns, which had nothing to do with the sinkholes, which just came out recently. So I'm curious to know whether the requesting the $2 million they asked for to be used for the security concerns, or do they want 1.6 million for sinkholes, or do they want 2.0 million plus 1.6 million, which would be 3.6 million?
No, it just, it was just.
So they do not want any money for the original $2 million for the security?
Evidently. What did you say, Mr. Manager?
That's what I'm saying. I think it needs to be clarified before we.
Okay, the superintendent and I did have a discussion about a week ago, and they sent me over documentation on sinkholes. I can bring that back to you, but the, the estimates for the sinkholes were a little north of 1.6 million, I remember. I believe I've got that right. What we had talked about during budget was the 2 million that we thought the state was making up, that was dealing with other items in their budget, not the sinkholes. But in discussion with him, he asked about the 2 million, but it was directed towards, they have an issues with sinkholes at King's Fork, I believe one at Cherry, and one might have been Florence Bowser, but most of them at King's Fork High School. But I can bring you back some information on that at the next meeting.
Personally, I would like further clarification, because at the last school board meeting, it was brought up by a school board member that they were not able to move forward with some of the safety initiatives they had because of the $2 million. And I'm not sure where the 1.6 million dollars came in after that. So I would like to know definitively whether their priority is 1.6 million, or they wanted 2 million to do the security and safety initiatives that they felt they needed the money for. Because I don't, you know, I'm just saying. Need some clarification.
All right. Well, I'd like to add, off a motion then, to, for the city manager to bring us a report back, and clarification on that.
Nobody mentioned the sinkhole at a school board meeting.
Okay.
But they did mention the security.
Well, I made a motion that the city manager would bring that back to us as well.
So we got a motion on the floor for the city manager, I guess, to confer with the superintendent to bring back to us a report as to what additional funding they would like to have and how they plan on spending it. Can we do that? Well, that's, we got to find out. Right. So, like I said, the motion would be for the city manager to confirm with the superintendent, to confirm what additional funding they are requesting, for what purpose. Okay. So do we have a second to that motion? Councilman Williams, and I apologize for.
Second, that.
Got a second from Councilman Williams. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Butler-Bartlow?
I know you're having a hard time with me.
Yeah, the lights are not, they're not, your name's going away.
I need a different color light.
I think it's too late. It goes off.
I just wanted to make the comment. So that there was a, there was a, there was a shortfall of $2 million in the school board budget. Not a shortfall, but there was a, a gap of $2 million. And I think that, that's the initial question, but I agree with the motion that we need to, you know, do they, how much is it that they want, and what do they want it for? And I don't have any problem with that. And I just, but I wanted to support, I just wanted to clarify the fact that the 2 million was in the budget, but we were waiting for the state to send it, and the state doesn't have a budget, so we're just in this loop. So anyway, just a point of.
Exactly. But sinkholes weren't an issue when the $2 million was requested. In the original budget, it was for safety initiatives.
Right.
And it was brought up at the last school board meeting, that they were not able to do those because of the $2 million shortfall.
Right.
So my question is, do we want the 2 million and 1.6, or is 1.6 going to be in place of the 2 million? So we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Do we have any further discussion of the motion?
Excuse me, Mayor, just so we can have some clarity. Just, just, I mean, there's a lot of chat. So just wanted to make sure I'm clear.
I believe the motion was direct the city manager to confer with the superintendent to ascertain what funds they would like to have appropriated for what purpose, with something like that.
Okay. How about this? To clarify the request for additional funds?
There you go. Short and sweet. There you go. Is that all right, Councilman Bennett?
That's right. That's my motion.
Okay. And the second was from, you all right with the second? Councilman Fawcett?
The, you know, I got no problem with the motion. The problem I got with it is, we have come over this one time before.
We have.
We talked about this, and we appropriated money one time before, if you remember, the sinkholes. Now, all of a sudden, because the state has not passed a budget, it's kind of mysterious that another regurgitation comes up of another $2 million process for sinkholes that I have a concern with, because I don't want this to go 1.6 because they wanted the security thing that they came to us and asked for that we appropriated. The other part of this, if the state does do a budget, and those $2 million do come forward, don't you think that we ought to be able to get our $2 million back, and that ought to be in the agreement if there's such a thing?
Well.
I know that some, somehow we can't do that, maybe.
Right.
But, you know, the, the, the problem is, it's always a sinkhole, sinkhole, sinkhole.
Well, they never finished all the sinkholes that was out there.
Okay, we, we just got on full, we'll wait and get a report.
I ain't got to beat it up no more.
Let's just wait and get a report. Okay. But to your point, you can't unappropriate money you already appropriate. And even if they say we're going to give it back to you, that doesn't work either. So anyhow. Okay, we got a motion on the floor and second. Let's vote quick. Everybody, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. Now we'll move to announcements and comments. Now we'll move to announcements and comments. At this time, I call media and community relations director Jennifer Moore, see if she has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Suffolk Fire and Rescue and Suffolk Police Department, in partnership with Suffolk Public Schools and Camp Community College, will conduct a multi-agency active shooter training exercise tomorrow, Thursday, August 17, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the campuses of Lakeland High School and Camp Community College. The training exercise will focus on emergency response to an active shooter incident on the campuses, and will involve a simulation of law enforcement and rescue response plan for an active shooter, and will help assure a coordinated, timely, and effective response and recovery in the event of a major incident. Significant law enforcement and fire department officials will be present during the exercise. In order to avoid any confusion, the public is notified ahead of time. The exercise is closed to the general public. Suffolk mosquito control advises that they have detected West Nile virus and eastern equine encephalitis in mosquitoes collected from the Eclipse area, Hobson area, Driver area, and the neighborhood of North Derico. Mosquito Control is intensifying its efforts in these areas, such as increased mosquito surveillance, treatment of standing water, and spraying for adult mosquitoes. Citizens should be aware and take necessary action to protect themselves while engaging in outdoor activities. For more information, visit Suffolk, the Suffolk mosquito control page on the city website at sufficva.us. The Department of Public Works advises motorists that the section of Manning Road from Route 58 Holland Road to Wilkins Drive will be closed during the day from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. starting on Monday, August 14 through Friday, August 18 for stormwater infrastructure installation. For more information, visit sufficva.us. The Suffolk Art League's annual juried exhibition is calling for artists. Entries are being accepted electronically through September 8. Artists may enter up to three artworks for consideration in any medium, with any medium. And the first-place winner is given an opportunity for a one-person show at the gallery in 2024. For more information, visit sufficartleague.com. The Commonwealth's Attorney's Office is hosting another session of their Conversation series tomorrow, August 17, at 6:00 p.m. at the Curtis R. Miltier Rec Center. The session's speaker is Deputy Commonwealth Attorney Vaughn Breedlove, and he will be on hand to chat about key issues facing Suffolk residents. Calling all local vendors, if you're a merchant vendor looking to showcase your goods, we want you to be a part of this scrumptious celebration at Taste of Suffolk. This year's event will be held on Saturday, September 9, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in downtown Suffolk. To sign up as a merchant vendor or to get more information, visit sufficva.us. Suffolk Parks and Rec invites you to save the date for their Youth Winter Sport League registration. Registration goes live online and in person on Friday, September 1. Sign up your kids for a fun winter sport like basketball, cheer, or footsall. For more information, visit sufficva.us. And lastly, as promised, I'd like to close out the announcements tonight with the recap video of our successful National Night Out event held on Tuesday, August 1, where over 12,000 Suffolk citizens across the city came out to strengthen our community. Roll it, Val. Forty years National Night Out! Thank you, and have a good night.
All righty. We'll now move to announcements from members of council. Let's start with Councilman Rector. Let me get you hooked up here. Where are you?
Off. I want to congratulate the city on what looked like a great National Night Out. I am sorry that I was out of town for that weekend, missed it, but I did take my National Night Out shirt and wear it that night. So I was trying to do my best to offer a little bit of solidarity with the rest of the Suffolk community. And having looked at that video, and I think I can say this without regret, Councilman Johnson, you look better in a pair of shorts than the city manager.
You're tough.
It's a tough crowd here. I mean, if anybody's paying attention at 10:10, they deserve a little bit of entertainment. I attended via Zoom, and thank you for this councilwoman, Butler Barlow, the Virginia Municipal League Finance Committee meeting was held via Zoom. And interesting, amazingly enough, lots of interesting stuff was discussed. And I got from it, gleaned from it, that the primary mission of the Finance Committee of the Virginia Municipal League is to make sure that municipalities are not hindered by actions from the General Assembly in collecting funds. And, you know, what they don't want to do is have something get shifted, and money that should be going to localities goes to Richmond, and then comes back to the local localities, because sometimes, you know, you send Richmond a dollar and you only get about 75 cents back. And I'd like to thank our treasurer, Ron Williams. After I got the agenda and looked through it, my head was swimming. But I called him up, and he went through the agenda with me and went through some of the actions and some of the policies and whatnot, explained them to me, so that when I did get to the meeting, I was able to participate. And, you know, fortunately, it was not over my head. So I enjoyed it very much. I attended the soft opening of West Side Burgers up in Bridgeport. I think that's going to be a great addition to that area. The food was casual, the food was good, the service was good, everybody was friendly. And I would encourage you, everybody, if they have not been to West Side Burgers, to check it out. And then, on a local note, I want to thank the Parks and Rec Department for their quick response to removing the graffiti that was put on some of our playground equipment, equipment over in the Maryland Avenue play area. It was, you know, for lack of a better phrase, vandalized. By the time it got back to me that it actually happened, it had already been reported by one of the citizens to the Parks and Recreation Department, and they had already been over there and cleaned it up. And then, just today, we attended the Senior Citizens Police Academy graduation, and that was a great ceremony. The police department, I think, should take a lot of pride in having that program. The class speaker, Mrs. Medaglia, gave a great little speech and kind of brought everything home for all the participants. And then we went over to police headquarters and had a great lunch. Thank you, Chief, for that. And then, following up on the last council meeting that I missed, Mayor Doeman, thank you very much for presenting my questions about the speed cameras and whatnot. And I guess from this point on, Mr. City Attorney, this will be known as the anal end of the dais.
Exactly. Right there.
But anyhow, the one lingering question that I had that the chief was able to answer for me today was, somebody asked me about the calibration of the cameras, and that, you know, it was told that they self-calibrate. Well, you know, how does that process work? And so the chief checked, and unfortunately, the exact procedure with how they do it is proprietary to the manufacturer and to the company that's managing them. However, if you wish to challenge the violation that you got on the basis that you don't think the machine was properly calibrated and you take it to court, they would be required to provide their calibration results. Maybe not necessarily how they did it, but they would have to satisfy the court that the equipment was calibrated properly. Did I get that right, Chief? All right, thank you very much. And with that, I will say good night. Oh, wait, one more thing. Just real quick. And in the discussion we had about the rezoning, I'm sorry that, you know, at some point, it did take on some of the elements that it did. I don't think bringing race into any, any activity that occurs from this dais is helpful. It's not helpful to this body. It's not helpful to the citizens of Suffolk. And I hope everybody in the city recognizes that, at least from this dais, everybody in the city is entitled to every opportunity that every other citizen is entitled to. And most of us are held by a fairly strict rule of ethics that enforce that. So I just want to let everybody know in the city that from this council, and I agree with Tim Johnson, that that kind of activity is not going to be tolerated.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just would like to thank everyone that came out tonight and voiced your opinions and your concerns. We heard you. So thank you again for coming out and continue to do so. And with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Very, very brief. National Night Out, Jennifer, everybody, the staff, chief, city manager, everybody that was involved, kudos. Everybody did a great job, and everybody looked like they were out there having a great time as well. So hopefully, we hit the benchmark to be maybe a first-place runner this year. We hope to keep that up. But anyway, it takes a big team to put something like that together, and I appreciate everybody that did that. John, I didn't get to go to the West Side Burger. I missed it. Stuck at Norfolk General, I couldn't help it. But if anybody has not been there, it's a cool little thing that it's up at Bridgeport. It's in a soft opening right now, but they're moving forward. But they're also putting outdoor pods, like where you can go in and have your own individual television. They're going to have outdoor entertainment there. They've got a small, you know, band of some sort. So that's expanding. That's under construction right now, but I take my hat off to the management of BECO to put that together. And the other cool thing is, there used to be some silos there. And right now, those silos are coming back, and they're going to have a little brewery on the bottom, and they're going to have a restaurant in the top. So that's going to be pretty cool to see that when they bring that back. So look forward to that. The north end is exploding. Thanks again for everybody that came out tonight. I know it got a little bit exciting there, and, you know, we try, you know, everybody tries to do the best, and not all of us agree up here all the time, and not everybody agrees that it's loved there that participates, but it is a process, and it's no different than any other process in our government. So I appreciate it. I want to thank the council tonight. Some good information, and we'll look forward to seeing you on the next meeting.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of comments on things to do. We got a whole list from tourism and from Jen's office, but I want to reiterate that the Nansaman Nation will be having their 32nd annual powwow at Mattinock Town in Chuk Tuk. And that's, they have hours on Saturday and Sunday both, and it's a good time. It's a really interesting event, and I encourage everybody that can to come out and check it out. Very family-friendly. Shameless plug, follow the detours on Manning Road and find your way to Beth Lamberton Club on Friday night. Luke Willett and the Show Me Band, excellent country music. I recommend it. 7:30, excuse me. For your moment for agriculture for tonight, because I just have to do it, our current extension agent, Elizabeth Cooper, has worked very hard to get me some numbers for tonight. You all should have gotten a letter this week that was from the Ag Committee. I hope everybody got that and took a look at it. One of the things that I want to try to do is to emphasize the economic impact of agriculture in the city of Suffolk. So again, this is my, you know, moment for agriculture. I want to go back to, we had, there were a lot of comments earlier, and I won't comment on many of them, but one of the things that was stated was that there are 79,000 acres of agriculture in the city of Suffolk. That's not correct. It's actually about 47,000. I'm sure that included forest land and that sort of thing. But, so we have about 47,000 acres under cultivation in the city of Suffolk, and most of that's row crops. And Elizabeth has come up with some very rough estimates, but I just want to give you a preliminary. When I have better numbers, I'm going to give them to you. But this is based on our row crops, which are corn, soybeans, wheat, cotton, peanuts, the major crops that we grow. Also, nursery and greenhouse activity and cover crops, which is a practice that we do. And she is estimating that the economic impact of these agricultural products, just these three things, not the whole big picture, is about $136 million in the city of Suffolk. And I'm going to get numbers to back this up for you, but I think that's pretty significant. Think it's something that we need to pay a lot of attention to. So just wanted to give that report. Again, I hope that you will take a look at the letter that was sent to you from the Ag Advisory Committee, and with that, I'll say good night.
Councilmember Bennett?
Well, we missed our time, Mayor. We said, what was your time?
Oh, yeah, I missed mine by a long shot.
Okay.
Well, I wasn't counting on Rogers. He pulled that out, we're right on the money. Take that 30 minutes.
I said 10 o'clock, and you said quarter of.
I said 10:58.
So anyway, looked like we here for a while tonight, so I must take a lot of time, too. Really, Chief, I don't know. Out there by Florence Bowser, yes. I think the sign is missing. I don't know if somebody borrowed it up there where they tell you about the camera. I passed by yesterday, the day before yesterday, and I didn't see it. The posts were there, but the signs were gone. So you might want to have somebody that calls school. It's getting ready to open in a couple of weeks, so I think we need to. And the other thing that has brought to my attention about the signs is, is there any way that we can get a larger letter, signs, where people can see it more clear as they passing by, instead of, you know, we've got to really focus when you get read upon it? Look, I don't want to say so, Mr. Manager.
Councilman, we've already put that in the works to get some larger signs.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Because that was something that some people have called my attention to out there as well. And I think with school opening, I think we need to continue to let the people remind them again about the school zones. And I've had some calls here recently, because Mac Ben was giving warnings out because it was in summer school, but now we're getting ready to go into regular session, so they need to make sure that they're aware that those lights, that's the other thing, we got to make sure that the lights, when they're flashing, is the time that the cameras are on. Because one person told me that they got a warning, but the flashes was not on, so again, I don't know. But we need to sort of look into that to make sure that when they're flashing, that they know that the cameras are working, okay? And with that, did I have anything else? Must have had something else I need to talk about, but I'm not ready to go home yet. Okay. With that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Johnson?
I'm going to go on the coattail of Leroy for one minute about communication. That's what I've had in the last few days from doctors going to the hospital. And signage is so important on all of these roads, particularly King's Fork School. I've talked to everybody, but we don't want to upset our people, but so much, so. But I think if we do the signage right, we get the word out there, and we communicate, 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 we'll get our point across. Briefly about tonight, I want to remind people, people that were here, that things didn't go like they wanted them to go, please. go like they wanted them to go, please don't stop. You make a difference. You make a difference to our city. Our city, this is our way of life. The communities that we want to see in our city are of our way of life, and we have to keep asking. We're not going to win all the battles, but we're going to win enough, and we're going to make the other things better. To the ones that came tonight that happened to get what they need, won it, congratulations. We're glad you were here. Everybody has a voice, and we want to hear everybody's voice. But it has to, we have to be unified as a people. I'll say it one more time. We don't do this. We like each other, and we don't, we don't make issues where there aren't issues. We work together. So I'll just make that point. One more thing, I want to thank Suffolk Fire and Rescue. I had a little incident at my house, they got out there in a very few minutes and sent the whole freaking squad. That was fine, we had a party, and got us out there, and I can't thank them enough. We're very blessed in the city to have the people we have working for us, and we have a wonderful Suffolk Fire and Rescue. So I really appreciate that. With that, I'll say good night.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, I attend the Sharon Missionary Scholarship banquet in Portsmouth. It had a lot of ministers and people from the city of Suffolk. I'd like to thank Maddie Falk and her husband. They gave me a couple of tickets, and I went, me and my wife, and it was very good. And one of the things that the speaker talked about was something almost, what we talked things today, it was rise up. And that meant that, what she mean, that with situations, we just can't sit back and think it, you know, it's going to be fine. You got to rise up to it and be ready to work on it. So that was, it was a very good speech, and I thought it was well-reserved for the crowd. I'm glad my councilman did mention about the letter that we had seen. And sometimes, you know, it's kind of hard sometimes for us to come up here and try to be as professional as we can, because a lot of times, we want to say something else, but we know that we've been elected. And by being elected, we have to respect the people that elected us there, then you got to respect the city. Because a lot of times, I don't, I want to say a whole lot what I don't say, but sometimes you got to get it out, because some, communication is so powerful. And that's what's wrong with a lot of situations now, we don't communicate, don't talk, because some of us had the same problems, and some of us know situations might, you don't know, but you might can figure out or help them. And one of the things that was hitting that letter when, and I don't want to bring it up, but I'll bring it up, when he said about family, you know, what I do up here, my family not involved, only thing that pushed me to do better or whatever, but far as you taking out what I say, and you put family into it, the way the culture of this country is, you can't take nothing for granted. So maybe he just, one of the times, if y'all know him, I think it'd be good for y'all to go and talk with him, because that wasn't the proper thing to do, because if I knew who wrote it, I would definitely go and address that to him, because he don't know what it means to sit up here, and he don't know what we had to go through. I mean, when you make decisions for people, that's important. You're not making a decision for yourself, you're making a decision for the people. And just like things were said, well, you know, sometimes it's good to get it out. Sometimes it's good, because sometimes things are pushed too far, and other people had to suffer. And when you suffering is different than what you see when you're not suffering. So I didn't want to say all that, but anyway, I just want, if anything I said, and most of the time I said less, but anything I said, tell the truth, don't lie. If I said it, I stand for it. But when you lie on me, that's different. So you don't have to lie on me, because if I said something, I meant what I said very seldom, I'm going to say something that, you know, I can't back it up. So I just said, up here, I respect what I do, I try to look out and be as fair as I can to the people that, who come to me and ask me questions, and I'll be, because I already know how to be in a lesser end. And in the letter, it was somebody named that was mentioned, that I have talked with this man, and this guy's, you know, I know he wouldn't look at it like that, so I'll take that, I know that wasn't him, so I appreciate that, what you did, Councilman Fossey, and brung it up, because if you wouldn't have brung it up, a lot of people wouldn't have brung it up. Now, thank you so much, because, you know, we sit on this dais, and what we say, we are this and we are that, we got to show it, we got to be about it. You know, I feel I can come to either one of y'all and talk about something, and I hope y'all feel the same way with me. Thank you, God bless.
Okay, I'll go ahead, and I will be brief. Just a couple events, I attended the old-school basketball classic at Lake Taylor, they've been putting it on. Clint Wright's been, I think, sponsoring it and get some of the old basketball, well, they are old basketball, not as old as me, but these guys graduated a long time ago, most of them in their 40s and 50s, and they get together and play basketball. So Smithfield beat Franklin, and Forrest Glenn beat JFK, and for the first time, Suffolk lost a game, and they lost to John Yates. So I just want to let you know that. But let me tell you, that place was packed. I don't know how we can put those on more often. When I say packed, I mean the gym was standing room only for those three games, and it's, I appreciate Clint, you know, and them putting that on for everyone to enjoy. The Senior Citizens Police Academy today, that was, I mean, that was awesome. I mean, it was almost like a family get-together or something more. It was a normal kind of bland mundane, hand out some things and go home. Everybody's, and I think we had, there were 25 graduates, and everybody was excited and smiling, and Sergeant Crowley got plenty of accolades, they bought a little platform, and it was just a very, very, very uplifting atmosphere during the whole thing. So my hats off to the chief, your folks, and they must have done something right, either that, they put something in the treats, I don't know, but everybody was happy, and the citizens as well. I just want to mention one thing. Last week, I, my wife had a little unfortunate incident and slipped and busted her head, didn't, you know, no blood or anything, but she had a concussion, and she just, she had a little bit of wherewithal to call my daughter-in-law, who came over and got her, got her presentable, took her to the hospital, the emergency room, took her to Centerra. And she got there, she didn't know where she was, didn't remember who put her shoes on. She took a pretty good shot in the back of the head, and I want to tell you, the treatment that she got there, I mean, I was, I mean, I was really impressed from the time that, and I didn't get there to begin with, you know, by the time they did the check-in, the preliminary, the emergency room, I mean, EKG, I mean, it was all, my, just my hats off to Centerra and all their folks there, and they're a huge part of our community, especially National Night Out, I think, kind of test of that. I mean, they really, you know, OBC and Cusi Hamlin kind of took the whole thing out, and the way that kind of evolved is because OBC used to have their own, and Kings Fork had their own, and then when OBC did their addition, they lost that land on the side, so that precluded them from having their own, and they combined. And they really step up and provide some resources for that, allocate some resources. So like I said, I just, you know, I just want to thank them for the services that they provide our citizens and their involvement in our community. This evening, you know, I want to encourage everybody's continued participation, regardless of what side of an issue you're on, I want both sides of the issue to be here every time. I want to hear what these folks got to say, and I want to hear what these folks got to say. And it's very, it's, I think it makes our job easier when, because normally, there's always two sides of an issue, when both sides of an issue are present, and it gives us more to listen to, more to base our decisions on, and ultimately, I think it's going to be better for all those concerned. But we just need to understand that we, normally, we're dealing with, you know, just issues that, just like I explained today, I mean, it's a land use issue, that's what it is, a land use issue. And that's how we need to look at it, we need to look at facts, we need to look at figures, and then we need to take into consideration what folks' opinions are. We definitely need to listen to everyone we can listen to, to garner as much information as we can, because that is the purpose of a public hearing. A public hearing is not to line up to see how many people want to do it and how many people don't want to do it. It's listening to their reasoning and the facts that they can bring forward that we may not have known about when we were formulating our decision to begin with. So, like I said, I want to thank everyone for coming out, just need to try to stay focused on the issue when we can and not be detracted by some other things. So with that, I'll go to my quote of the night. I don't know why I chose this one, I really don't even know who wrote it, but I've seen it before. It says, "Choose your battles wisely, because if you fight them all, you'd be too tired to win the really important ones." And with that, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Johnson?
I move.
Got a motion for adjournment. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. End of discussion, the motion, hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clark, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.